Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to call the order of the regular city commissioner on April fifth, twenty twenty-two. Please have a more problem.
Commissioner Jaski.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Lieutenant Hidak.
Eric.
Mayor Danz.
Here. Before we have our moment of silence, if you could, I can please ask everyone, please remember Mayor Lynn Charles from the City of White House, who has been asked to make his own outstanding representative for the city and just an actually great guy. He would be deeply missed, so please remember your thoughts as we have our moment of silence, our pledge to allegiance. Let's believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the great mother for which it stands, one nation, one ground, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. We now have forty-three city commission meeting minutes for March fifth, eighteen twenty-two.
Motion, second.
Motion by Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Preston, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And host acknowledges the city working events for the potent lies meeting minutes to November second, twenty twenty-one, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Our Hillsborough Inlet is for twenty-nine, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Our rating five for meeting minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Our community, uh, community appearance for meetings, that's February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Patricia Preston, second by HJ Parnas, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The approval of our visits tonight for April fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Parnas, second by Commissioner Preston. Uh, before approving that, I know that there was a presentation that Commissioner Preston about to bring up, if we could put that in, or words of recognition, is that what all right with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, does the motion still stand?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that's.
For members of the public wishing to provide comments during tonight's meeting, three minutes will be provided, however, one additional minute can be granted by Mayor Danz. Anyone connected online via some video, just hover the mouse at the bottom of the screen and click the participants tab on the right to raise hand, you'll be recognized on your full file name and your audio will be unneeded. Those participating via mobile or landline, without star line to raise your hand, you'll be recognized by the last three digits of your phone number and you'll get a star six unmuted if necessary.
Thank you very much. Um, the first item we have is a presentation by our state representative Patricia Williams about the post summary of our twenty-two legislation. Representative, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Vice Mayor, commissioners, city attorneys, city mayor, city manager, and all the people of the city of Dillfield. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to be here today. I'm going to start off giving a presentation about the budget itself. This year in the legislative session, we had a hundred and twelve billion dollars that were a two for the state of Florida budget. That's the highest it's ever been in the state of Florida. In the budget itself, it includes thirty-two billion dollars for education, criminal justice, six billion, human resources, forty-eight billion, national, national resources and environmental, um, nineteen billion, general government, seven billion. We have three hundred and thirty-seven million dollars is included for affordable housing. I was personally able to secure two million dollars for small business loans, two hundred and forty-one thousand for Broward Health. Um, former representative Glenn Clark reached started working on this, and this is for every woman in Broward County for breast cancer. We also have four hundred and two thousand and for Lauderdale Lakes, mentoring tomorrow for the schools, we have five hundred thousand. Rocket floors, we got three hundred and fifty, some enrichment programs, three hundred and fifteen thousand. The city of Fort Lauderdale has one million also included in the budget. We also voted on registripping and appropriation, um, which we will be getting back to Tallahassee on April nineteenth. The governor has not approved the maps itself, which he has the right to disapprove. Um, the Congress map, the House map and the Senate map has been completed. The governor still has the opportunity to veto anything that's in the budget, that's why it's proposed budget itself. Um, I work on, um, an item that I'm very proud of each year is, um, House Bill eight fifty-nine, which will actually give, um, a reading achievement for children in high school and also give the high school students the opportunity to earn, um, fun if they are actually helping elementary schools, children to read at us on a lower level and not able to achieve at this time. We also have House Bill ten eleven, which was a task force for missing children, children in out of care or foster care program. Um, I don't know if it's going to be approved yet, but it has been put, uh, for, uh, we also have, um, House Bill seven, seventy-sixty-five, which will help any children that's in the welfare system and also as part of this, any church members that interested in working with these kids, that money is in the budget, tell the governor to approve it. It has several controversy bills that went forth, House Bill three, House Bill five, House Bill seven, House Bill three, which would actually make up a holy source for the governor himself. It also have five hundred, a million dollars in there for such form without oversight committee. You have HB five, which will, um, we call it the abortion bill, which is if someone finds themselves pregnant after fifteen weeks, they're not able to have an abortion. Um, House Bill seven, which is freedom of speech, where they actually try to, um, tell you when and what to say and how to say it based on, uh, the bill itself. I have copies of everything that I have mentioned, uh, in a package on the side that you, if anyone would like to pick it up. My telephone number and address of the office is also included, if you have any questions or concerns that you may, um, think that I can help you out with, my door is always open.
Thank you so much, representative, really appreciate it. Thank you for all your hard work. I'll ask you for us.
Thank you for giving this opportunity.
Absolutely, thank you. We have a certificate of recognition to be presented to, uh, recipients of the City of Deerfield Beach Education Advisory Board School Scholarship. And tonight's, uh, is Miss Amory Person de Ball, who is a city of Deerfield Beach resident, who attends Deerfield Beach High School. Miss Person de Ball has a three point six two GPA. Amory Person de Ball is active in her school and is a brace ambassador, an Ivy diploma graduate, and art club officer. She also wants to be a pharmacist and will be attending Nova Southeastern University College Pharmacy Fall twenty-twenty-two. She's the second runner-up for the City of Deerfield Beach Education Advisory Board High School Scholarship funded by the Rotary Club of Deerfield Beach in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars. The city of Deerfield Beach would like to say congratulations, Miss Person de Ball, and good luck to continue success in education. Our second honorary is Carice Richards, the Deerfield Beach resident and attends Blanche Healy High School. Ms. Richards has a three point eight GPA, she's dual enrolled student at Broward College as well. Ms. Richards is very active in her school, is a member of the first priority, Blanche Healy National Academy Foundation, the National Junior Honor Society, the Poetry Club, the Queens Leadership Club, and participates in the Blanche Healy marching band. Ms. Richards wants to be a nurse and will be going to University of South Florida College University in the fall of twenty twenty-two. Ms. Richards is a winner of the City of Deerfield Beach Education Advisory Board High School Scholarship in the amount of one thousand dollars funded by the Rotary Club of Deerfield Beach. So on behalf of the City of Deerfield Beach, we'd like to say congratulations, Carice Richards, and good luck with your continued success. The next item we have is a proclamation honoring our National Fair Housing Month for twenty twenty-two. Title seven of the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-eight, better known as the Fair Hou- Housing Act, is a federal law that bans housing discrimination, renting, mortgage lending, applying for housing assistance, and other housing related activities. The Department of Justice files suits against real estate professionals found in violation of this act, which is one of the most significant housing laws in the history of the United States. The Fair Housing Act still serves as a powerful statement about who we are as people, the values of equality, equity, and dignity that will all, we all strive to uphold in the places where we all have to work to do, all that we have work to do to fulfill our commitment as a city. Now, over fifty-four years, laws made the world of difference, allows families and communities, not just, uh, in the city of Deerfield Beach, but certainly beyond. The city of Deerfield Beach is committed to our communities to ensure that adequate housing is a right for all people. The city of Deerfield Beach would like to declare the month of April as Fair Housing Month. We have someone here for, um, representatives. If you know, excellent, thank you. Our next proclamation is for Volunteer Recognition Week. The National Volunteer Week is an opportunity to recognize the impact of volunteer service and the power of volunteers to tackle society's greatest challenges to build stronger communities, to be a force to transform the world. Each year, we shine a light on people and causes that inspire us to serve, recognizing and thanking volunteers who have time, talent, and voice to make a difference in our community. Our city volunteers threaten communities through social challenges and enhance the overall quality of life for Deerfield Beach citizens. The service of our volunteers has provided a foundation for a safe and united community by dedicating countless hours, mentoring our youth, serving the elderly, providing food and services to those in need. The city of Deerfield Beach will celebrate National Volunteer Week, April seventeenth to twenty-third. I look out there tonight, there are many volunteers here in the audience, whether it be Rotary, the Women's Club, all various walks of life, I want to thank all of you who served our community. So thank you very much for Volunteer Recognition Week. Comprehensive Plan update.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you, uh, for this presentation. I have our Director of Planning Development Services, Mr. Power. Good evening, Eric Power, Director of Planning Development Services of Deerfield Beach. Go to the next slide.
Tonight, we have a presentation for you related to, um, the updated comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, as you can see, uh, is it possible to move the, um, the images, the, that you're, all of that? Thank you so much, Eric. Um, the, the comprehensive plan is a requirement of states, there are fifteen states in the country that have a comprehensive plan for, is one of them. And every seven years, we have to update. So what happened, if you recall, go to the next slide, I'm honored. Uh, what happened, if you recall, last year, April sixth last year, we did what was called an evaluation and appraisal report, which is really the update, the comprehensive plan, in which staff determines what changes, uh, if any, are necessary for the update. Uh, that was when the city commission was brought forward to the state, the state returned its comments and gave us until May twelfth of this year to actually update the comprehensive plan, which we are on, on time to do. Um, the comprehensive plan is not just an item of the planning department. It is really comprehensive, is the fact that almost every single department for this Deerfield Beach works on this plan, help us update it. Uh, environmental services, county management, our IT department, our public safety departments, parks and recreation. All these departments work together, help update this plan, make sure it meets all required state statutes as well as county ordinances. Go to the next slide, please. In total, there are actually twelve elements or chapters through plan, and as you can see, that element, uh, one and twelve say new next to them. That's because they are new requirements from the state that did not exist back in twenty fourteen, when first hit our, our, uh, last, I'm sorry, we did our last comprehensive plan. So these are brand new items that need to be discussed. Go to your next slide, please. So tonight, what we're gonna, I'm sorry, to look, look on that. Tonight, we're ready to doing is just having a presentation on most of the item. The document is so large, thanks backup, it's over four hundred pages. We're gonna be talking about these items, and at the next meeting, go to the next slide. At the next meeting, we'll be talking about following areas. So tonight's presentation has already been, uh, reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Board. And then, uh, this Thursday will be the next Planning and Zoning Board meeting, which they'll be reviewing those next elements, they'll be coming forward, uh, to you. All right, next slide. Okay, so the first one we're gonna talk about is the property rights elements, the brand new element, it's just this year. And essentially, uh, what happened was Florida legislature required, uh, that property rights be part of the comprehensive plan. If you recall, a couple of years ago, they also required that property rates are part of the property appraisers, um, direction as well. So now this is also included with the comprehensive plan. Go to the next slide. Uh, our next element is transportation, transportation obviously being a very large part of the comprehensive plan in regards to, uh, roads and highways, bridges, things of that nature. Go to the next slide. And essentially, elements that were changed, that we updated the data and analysis, of course, a lot of things happened within seven years, uh, due businesses, residents, uh, actually new roads. So a lot of things changed, we've identified all of those, uh, include updates to public transit, and like, next slide, please. Utilities was our next element. Uh, utilities obviously being things like water, wastewater, stormwater, things of that nature, go to the next slide. So updates that occurred in the last seven years, obviously, we now have a stormwater, uh, master plan. Um, and, uh, we've updated all of our global water and stormwater, um, requirements, again, and when you increase intensity, as tends to happen in Florida, all these things do tend to change, the numbers change, the value capacity changes. Go to the next slide. Uh, coastal management, the next element, obviously, being a coastal city, we have coastal, uh, management elements, uh, which everything is for our barrier island. So the next slide. And, uh, there's changes where, uh, the coastal zone, which is an establishment, established area now, maybe later, the coastal zone is essentially every east of U S one. Uh, that's a requirement now for us to update, escape where that line is. Uh, dune restoration, uh, important element of what we do here in Deerfield Beach. And now, of course, our emergency evacuation plans. Go to the next slide, please. Uh, conservation, important element of the city, uh, next slide. Identifying the conservation elements that we have in the city, updating our maps, uh, resources and quality reports as we have to do, uh, next slide. Intergovernmental coordination, or ICE as we like to call it, essentially, that's our, um, requirements to, uh, work with Broward County, the state of Florida, and our adjoining cities, go to the next slide. And we did update this particular element, uh, to include our neighboring over town, which county is part of our adjoining cities, and the newer coordination language that was part of the state and regional Broward County government. Next slide, please. Capital improvements, um, actually, nothing really changes, is this, you guys know, back, uh, every year in December, we bring the capital improvement element to you. So no new changes to this item, with the exception of, go to the next slide. We did update, um, the currency levels of service and transportation, as that was an element. We updated those levels of service in our capital improvement plan as well. As you know, the capital improvement plan is part of the annual budget every year, so this particular item doesn't change at this moment. Go to the next slide. Schools, um, so, you know, Broward County has its own school board, and we have an interlocal agreement with Broward County. We recently approved a third interlocal agreement with Broward County, and so this is now, uh, added to the aspect of comprehensive plan, sorry, next slide. The third first interlocal agreement, which was approved by, by this board a few years ago, is now part of the comprehensive plan. And next slide, please. And then the climate change, which is the new element. So, um, so the state of Florida has covered climate change, these we reported in our comprehensive plan, which we have done. And, um, we've added, um, potential impacts of climate change in Florida and, uh, substantial, or sustainable initiatives to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions, water conservation, and strengthen the overall residence system. And I believe that's the last slide. So just before we get to comments and questions, I want to bring up two quick things. The importance of the comprehensive plan is to update our plan to be in compliance with Broward County, state, and other intergovernmental agencies. Uh, the staff does not make decisions or determinations related to, uh, necessary improvements, uh, budgetary items, those are all things that the commission obviously does for the budget in the process. So what this document simply does is update all the things that have occurred over the last seven years. So just bringing that point that there are no, no new decisions or anything as information was made, uh, in the updated comprehensive. And I'm here for any questions. Tonight is just so you know, it's not an actual item, we're not quoting by, it's just a presentation, so we go to all the elements of the next.
Questions? Mr. President. Sorry, boys.
One thing that, that, uh, stuck out to me is, um, what we identified as, uh, a family or city.
So we, um, we identify the aspects that are related to the comprehensive plan. So all the items that are in the comprehensive plan are updated for the city. Um, unfortunately, because this is a new out, aspect or new element, no studies have been done from, you know, the comprehensive plan on what any of that brought. But we've updated the elements to include those things if we have to do that, so, like, if it comes forward in the future.
Patricia Jaski.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first a little bit of housekeeping, Mayor, since this is the first meeting we've all been in person together in quite some time, would you prefer, I wanted to speak, that we press our buttons on the dais or the?
I think we'll probably be pressing a lot of buttons tonight, so it's wrong, you can keep it that, I think it's easier. It's actually very difficult to try to watch the monitor and see who's on, see who's, but everybody up here, so it is a little, uh, getting used to, but if we use these buttons up here, that's.
All right, perfect. I don't have any, uh, questions, Mr. Power, I did meet with him prior to tonight's meeting, uh, and went through this, uh, exhaustively, and I just want to thank him and Bonnie Jacobson and his department. As he alluded to at the beginning of, of his presentation, this is a massive document, uh, almost six hundred pages. Uh, and, and they update that, you know, internally here at the city themselves, so the, it's a, it's a yeoman's effort, and so I just want to thank, you know, Mr. Power and Mr. Jacobson for the effort that they do, because it requires countless, uh, man and woman hours to put that together. So I just wanted to point that out because it's a time that was well spent, thank you for doing it.
All right, thank you, and, um, while it was a huge effort, not just for Mr. Jacobson and, and all the city, I do need to point out that we did have a contractor, they're current associates, they helped us a lot of the data there, in fact, they were a big help to us.
Uh, can you should report us?
I think Ten Street is a very important street in Deerfield Beach. And I've always been a believer and watched through my years, towns die, areas die, they go down. You either improve them or they die. There's no standing still forever. Buildings get old, they get dilapidated. The neighborhood gets run down. Only way to save it is to improve the neighborhood. Putting homes, bringing families. That section of the city is a blessing. It's an uplifting of the community. It's a renewing of a community. It's stabilizing, and I think it's an important asset for the city of Deerfield.
Commissioner.
To improve that.
Commissioner Parnas. Is that regarding the comprehensive plan, are you talking about item number six?
Item number six.
So we'll thank you, Mr. Powers, appreciate it. Uh, next, we have, I know according to the item number six, uh, and there's Mr. Preston as an item that you want to present.
Yes, uh, I'm really, really happy and proud to share with you that we have a program in the city of Deerfield Beach. That is a joint effort between BSO and Florida, which is called the C program. And that actually stands for skill enhancement and employment development. Now, what is that program? Uh, that program is when we take young people, a select group of young people, that actually go through classes in how to interview, uh, like the, this is the second annual, um, a part of this program. And what they do is, uh, only, it's like basically five weeks. The first week is like an overview of all the things that they're going to be doing. Then second, no, the second week, they teach you is how to create a resume to fill out for a job. And, uh, on the third week, they actually go shopping, uh, to get business attire. And they actually get an outfit, you know, that they would like, a personal outfit. And then on the fourth week, it all comes together, all the things that they've done, again, preparing these kids how to go out and to get a job, and then on the fifth week, they actually graduate. Again, this is a, uh, project between BSO and our quarters. We have a video that I, uh, just want to show you, and it's a very short video, and, uh, I hope it's of joy. So before we go to that video, I'll tell you that there's at least ten mock interviews for these kids. And I was over there on Saturday during graduation, it was really something very special to see these kids go through this program, graduate, uh, it was just something that was very outstanding. And it was just beautiful from the sense that you had all kinds of participants. There were black kids, there were white kids, there were Spanish kids, it was just something that was really, really awesome. Quanis and BSO did a pretty great job, uh, and it was the favorite.
The C program, which stands for skill enhancement and employee development. It's the second year for the program run by the Broward County Sheriff's Office, which helps junior and seniors getting ready to enter the workforce. The idea came about when community officers from BSO were talking to students and learned that they didn't have anyone to help them apply for jobs. The students felt unsure about where to start, so the Broward County Sheriff's Office stepped up and started this program. For four Saturdays, the students learned how to create a resume, go shopping for interview outfits, and go through mock interviews. During the first year, three of the students landed a job while still in the program.
Uh, when they decide that they're at the age where they want to start making money. Uh, they either want to buy stuff for themselves or their family. Um, we're giving them the proper tools so that they can make the right choices on how to make money. Uh, how to enter the workforce, how to get a a proper job, uh, instead of making alternative and potentially bad decisions and ways to make money. One of the students came up to us and said, yeah, I was able to actually apply because I finally had a professional outfit that I can wear for an interview. So it was amazing to see so instant gratification from this.
Fantastic, BSO saw a problem and found a fix, created a solution there. Uh, that program is sponsored as well. For more information, you can visit BSO on how you can get involved or help take part.
Um, I want to also tell you that uh, you know, make sure that, and what you know, that Quanis was very involved with that. They have really embraced this program. And uh, Joe, if you will come up for just a second, Joe LaMonaco, uh, we give a special thanks to him. He did such a good job with the program and he gave uh, fantastic word of honor to our children. Thank you, Joe.
So that, that is why we started this program, was to give kids an opportunity to uh, to make the right decision. And uh, a special thanks to Quanis, we, we went up to them with this idea. Uh, we, the first year, we had to kind of piece it together, just little donations here and there. And this year, we went to Quanis, we pitched it to them, within seconds, they unanimously said, uh, yes, one hundred percent, we want to be on board. Uh, and not only did they monetarily sponsor this, but they also provided all the volunteers. And uh, they made it their signature project, which means that for the foreseeable future, it's going to keep happening. And they're going to sponsor it every year, which is amazing, to get to bring positive interaction for these kids' lives for uh, for some years to come. So I just want to thank Quanis for being a part of that.
Number six.
Thank you, Mayor Anthony Soroka, City Attorney. For the record, item number six tonight is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida. Rezoning approximately one point five nine gross acres located at three forty-one, three fifty-one, three eighty-one, four twenty-one, and four forty-one Southwest Tenth Corps from Business Community B one to Residence Multilegal R M fifteen. Application twenty-one dash R dash sixty-four. Approving the applicant's request for the allocation of eighteen flex units, providing for a maximum of eighteen townhouse dwelling units, providing for separability, conflict-free effective date. This is first reading, I think the applicant is here, uh, as well as the applicant's representative. I want to come up from the presentation.
Leave or we could say.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Rod Fire, I'm an attorney with Quanis Fire. Fourteen oh four South Andrews Avenue, I'm here representing both the property owner and developer. So this is a request for rezoning from B one to R M fifteen. Um, we believe that it's appropriate considering the change in nature of the community and what's done. Go to the next slide please. Go to the next slide please. And more. And again. So this puts the property in sort of context. You can see where the star of the property is on uh the diagram. What the property is, is it's surrounded by, for most part, residential, there's a church parking lot to the west, to the south, the residential property, to the west is residential property. And this property does not front Southwest Tenth Street, I just wanted to point that out. That's one reason why we're requesting rezoning. The city actually purchased a portion of this property sometime ago and turned it into a residential park. So the property that's adjacent to Southwest Tenth Street is a linear park. And so when we were first looking at this property, we first studied the property and said, well, wait a minute, is it really appropriate for a commercial use to be on this, on, on this property? When we were looking at it, because in the B ones, just in the D one zoning district, you look at it and you say, wait a minute, what are the types of uses that allow the traffic development? Do you really want that commercial intrusion to the neighborhood? And we thought that it would be much better to do townhomes as a development on this property. And so what the developer and owner is suggesting is that rezonar R M fifteen to construct eighteen townhomes. Those are fee simple townhomes, they'll be ownership. Um, townhomes on the property which serves as a nice buffer between the park and the residence between to the south and everything else. Um, I should also, I would view amiss is, and I, and also inform you that besides me, we have representatives from the owner and developer, Justin Schiff is here, the project architect is here, and several others are here for the project. Um, if you could go to the next slide please. This is just an example or a blow up of the area of what I was talking about. You can see how south, uh, the linear park is to the north of the property, and to the south of us is residential. To the east of us is a parking lot for a nearby house, a worship church, and then it also have additional residential on the other side. So if you could go to the next slide please. I'll bring your attention to the two slides on the white, the up, the top one, the bottom one. There you can sort of see the city's linear park and how it exists, and then this vacant land that's behind it, before we get to the adjacent neighborhood. And that is significant because, go to the next slide please. The next slide please. If you look at what the rezoning or the current rezon of the zoning would allow, and I think it's important to go through this. What would the zoning allow? The current zoning would allow, as you can see up there, a convenience store, a restaurant with outside seating, a brew pub, a packaged liquor store. It would allow a fitness studio, so let's just not calling anybody out, but F ninety-five or Orange Theory Fitness, which brings people in at five in the morning till nine or ten o'clock at night, those studios do that. All those type of commercial uses. In addition, the height is much greater than what's allowed in R M fifteen, so you provide bigger buildings. Uh, we'll go through that in just a minute. Keeping this D one then, especially with how it's situated, allows commercial intrusion to the neighborhood. Because when you look at how this property is situated, there is no direct access to this property from Southwest Tenth Street anymore. The city's linear park is there. So what does that mean? It means if you were to develop a commercial development, which is what B one would allow, it means you have traffic that is now coming off Southwest Tenth Street, circling through the neighborhood, parking at all different hours of the day and night on, on this property, the provided parking, and then leaving. Again, much more of a high generator of traffic and much more traffic going on. And all these commercial facilities would most likely have dual entrances facing both the linear park, which is what you don't want, and facing the residential neighborhood, which is again, what you might want. So if we could go to the next slide please. So that's a conceptual site plan. I will say that we processed the site plan, this is not coming in isolation. I agree, if this makes it to second reading, and it comes on the second reading, you'll see your site plan. You'll see uh, the full development on this, but this has been presented to C A B. It's received the management recommendation of approval, C A B has presented it to P and Z. They also recommended approval on this. Uh, but some of the key differences is, for instance, in the B one zoning district, you have a maximum height of forty-five feet. What you can do, this proposed development here in the R M is, is thirty-four feet. We're actually lower than what the R M fifteen allows. In addition, in the B one, only fifteen percent of the site has to be landscaped. And the R M fifteen, it's much higher, as a matter of fact, the site plan, forty-two percent of the site is being landscaped. So there's a significant amount of landscaping that's occurring with this proposed development. And we're allowed to cover up the fifty percent of the lot with buildings or anything else in B one. In this particular case, it's much significantly less, it's about twenty percent on what we're doing here. In addition to that, as part of this development, the developer is building sidewalks all along the street. And they're also dedicating a right of way for the city. The city requires that this roadway be a little larger, and so the applicant is developing and dedicating right of way all the avenue in zone R M fifteen without any variances. Now, I will say, if it was zone B one, you could do some type of residential on the property. You could do a mixed use spell. Let's talk about what mixed use means. It means retail or some type of commercial use on the ground floor and then residential above. So A, you'd have to want to find people who would want to live in that area to do that. And B, um, you still have the commercial intrusions in the neighborhood. This rezoning gets rid of the commercial intrusion. And one brief note that you'll notice in the staff report, which is also recommending approval, um, there's an accompanying request for an allocation of flex units. Let me just explain that a little bit, since Eric just did such a great job on the comprehensive explanation. Um, this land use has a designated commercial, there are two ways to go about having res, your only residential is not allowed on commercial land use, unless it's part of the flex unit, but your comprehensive plan, the Broward County Comprehensive Plan, allows two ways to address that. One is a small scale land use plan amendment, which takes about a year, year and a half to process. It goes through the state, goes through the county, and it's not really necessary for a project of this size. The other one is to allocate what we call flexibility units. That then allows the residential user still in compliance with the common plan. The eighteen residential units, what we're doing, as you saw in the staff report, the city still has about fifteen hundred residential units in its pool after this, if this project were to be approved. Um, so there is still more than sufficient residential units allowed in pool in case someone else wants to do a development of some sort along those lines. Um, I will say as well that the applicant in this case um, was very cognizant that a rezoning would be occurring, and cares about neighbors in the community and knows what's going on. Um, what the applicant did was before, you ever purchased property, before you ever looked into it, you try to meet with the local residents and discuss the plans for the property. As a matter of fact, you had the pastor of the nearby church. That was before we ever purchased it. And then before we were coming to planning zoning board, we sent out a notice to all the residents in the surrounding community. Alright, and, and we said, come meet us at the church, we'd like to show you what we're doing, discuss what we're doing, and see if you have any concerns. One, three people showed up at that community. One person was against the project and said she'd rather it be a cemetery, but she didn't want to see this type of development there, in all honesty. Um, I think a cemetery is not allowed in B one to be in with. Um, and they don't get to choose the type of, you know, nobody gets to choose the type of uses that's permitted use in the zoning district. The other people we just spoke to were um, just curious about the project and did that. So we tried to do community outreach and speak to everyone in the area. This is really a down zone of what's there now, in essence. We are, it's a smaller height, it's uh, greater setbacks, it's more landscaping than what would be allowed under the current code. And more importantly than all that, this zoning is compatible with the city's what's currently in the property and the surrounding of the property, your mother, family, and the single family home surrounding it. And, and one of your pillar criteria for rezoning, you have my justification statement in the backup, so you've all seen that. But it talks about changed circumstances. And we, well, let's talk about what's changed circumstances are. The changed circumstances are the city park that's just to the north of our property. That changes everything. It made sense that this property was commercial, right? When you had commercial frontage on Southwest Tenth Street. As a matter of fact, further west, you actually have that, there's a convenience store with the same type, that's, that's right up against Southwest Tenth Street. Park was in the front, then the convenience store. Traffic goes in off of Southwest Tenth Street. In this particular case, there is no traffic on Southwest Tenth Street, there is no ingress and egress on Southwest Tenth Street. So that means you would have to come in through the local roads, park on this area that impacts the residential neighborhoods. We're trying to preserve that, it's much less intense with this. And again, these would be ownership units, rentals. Um, we think that's important, they would be market rate units, is what we're doing. We don't have a sales price yet, but they're, they're market rate units. And with that, as I said, my client, the project architect is here, um, we're happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Preston.
Yes, uh, you said that you met with the, the residents, you know, so initially.
Yeah, yeah, so what we did was we sent out a notice, mailed notes, to the residents in the area and said, come meet us at the church nearby. We didn't want, my client has an office in Pompano, he's also working with the city on other projects. But we didn't want them to have to travel to Pompano Beach, try to make it as convenient as we could for them. So we said, please come to the church, you know, right by this property. And I think it was like six thirty or seven P M we did, so it was during non-work hours. We'd like to introduce the project to you, tell you what's going on. Three people showed up at that meeting, so.
So other than that meeting, was there any other test to uh, help the neighborhood?
Uh, besides what occurred at plenty in zoning board, no. There were, there weren't a lot of people that showed up the first time, so we didn't see the need to do it again, to be quite honest. You know, if there would have been twenty people, thirty people there or something, it, it could have, you know, that could have led to some additions. But when no one showed up, there was, there was no reason to do that.
So the information that came to me and some of the sponsors that I've asked in relation to this was that they just wish, uh, the residents that lived there just wished that it had been more durable and that they could have forced their concerns a bit more than what they would give them opportunity.
Well, I'll tell you.
Some of the people that said that they were not aware of that initial meeting. And uh, and, and it just felt like they didn't should be that.
Well, well, we're all about communication, have no problem with that. This is an ordinance, there are two readings on the ordinance. Should you agree to pass this on a first reading, it's not binding on what you do on second reading. You can still deny it then, and in between first and second reading, we'll do another meeting and meet with the residents. And if they're uncomfortable going to the church, do it or whatever, we'll help, we'll help, we'll hold it on the property. We'll put a big tent up and hold it on the property or do something else like that.
So you would, you would be willing to meet with residents to hear their concerns?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Vice President.
I, I was just, I mean, seems like a, a wonderful project. If you put, you know, what's there, you know, a, a block away, you could put another package store there, you could put, um, you know, a gym there, there's a lot of things that you could put in that would disrupt this neighborhood. Um, I was just curious, uh, if you had any feedback on what the residents find so, so disturbing about this project? I think it's a wonderful project. And would you give details that you can share? Because I don't see any downside to this project at all.
Well, it's not necessarily from, uh, you know, something new coming to the neighborhood that is bad. But whether one sees it and now, I don't know, people don't see it now, but people still have concerns. Some of the concerns was, they want to know the building, you know, how intrusive this project would be on them. Uh, how does it look? Just general input. Exactly, those kinds of things, that the community wants to be involved in. I think there's two ways a developer can bring a project. On one hand, you can bring it, it's just that we want you to be involved, we want you to know what we're doing. Uh, help us with that, that can be done. Or you just do what you want to do, and that way you don't have good neighbors. Um, I think that the neighborhood understands that, that the property is owned, but they want to live there, already have been living there. They just want to know as that project comes forward, and we have some input about how it appears in our community and how that adjustment will take place. And I think that's completely reasonable.
So do I, sir, we try to do that, and I've committed today, and I'll do it again, before this comes back for second reading, that we will do that stuff. I, I can't guarantee what's going to occur out of those meetings, but we're always willing to talk to our listeners.
Yeah, my colleagues, did they have some questions? Thank you. Any other comments before we turn it over to the public? Mr. Pressley.
Yeah, I just would like to remind my, my colleagues that we're just being asked to do the rezoning tonight. Um, you know, the devil's always in the details, when you come back for a site plan, that's when we're really going to grill you. Uh, I appreciate you being proactive, because even though it's a, even though it is a rezoning, we always tend to ask site plan questions at a rezoning, so I'm glad you were prepared and had your team here in case those questions came up. Um, but I would just also like to emphasize that in that B one, you know, to the residents that may have concerns to this project is what the alternatives they could have had there, and there were some of them that were in the, the presentation. Some of the conditional uses as well, you know, hotels, motels, automobile dealer, automobile dealerships, nightclub, bars, and lounges. So I think they'd much rather have a townhouse project than what the current zoning allows today, that they can ask for conditional use to put in a nightclub or a bar or a lounge there. Uh, so I think this is more resident friendly than, than what could be there under the B one in zoning as it exists. So changing the zoning to R M fifteen, I think, um, is a benefit to the residents in, in the long run. And we'll get into the details of the project at a future meeting. And we'll get into the details of the project at a future meeting.
I have elevations here if you wanted to see them. I just did note on, on first reading for zoning, you know that everything's coming back together before you, if this goes forward on second reading. You know that devils are, you want to see the landscape plan, the elevations and everything else, we're happy to provide on that, of course.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Preston. Yes, I'd like to say something to my colleague, Commissioner Drosky. I think that the, uh, residents that they were very well aware of information that you just mentioned. Like it's just how this comes forward and the process as it goes forward, as it go forward in a way where the community is in its initial state, its most elementary state. Feel a part of it, no matter what you go there, you know. So am I a part of it? Do you consider me? Do you know who I am? That's, 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 that's the right thing to do. Uh, I, I think based on the fact that we're linear park, or we've seen some of the other projects we have along these major thoroughfares that could be various, like Deer Run area. I think of, uh, what we already have on Ten Street, which you have front facing, uh, commercial, doesn't exactly, uh, serve as well. Uh, and some of these major thoroughfares have these smaller strips like that. Certainly this project, the zoning exists now or may be an increased negative impact on residents. It just doesn't make sense. Imagine driving along Ten, having the back of whatever commercial is going to be there. Have that facing towards, uh, Ten Street does not help. It certainly takes away from the linear park project that we were first up here. She brought forward on that. So I, I support this. I think this makes a lot of sense, so.
Thank you. And as I've noticed, the devil's already detailed for next hearing, but we are, you'll, you'll see the elevations on Gurren, the park road L A C, which is right next to us. So we can sort of be the, I, we are envisioning this as a little bit of a gateway into that development as well.
Thank you. I, I am going to make a suggestion to my colleagues and this is what I'm going to ask the public in a minute. But with these that come up and we, we tend to put it on developers to be, you know. And we, it always falls short of what our expectations are. I think our, what we should do, it's easy for me to say, it's mayor, like a fellow of you, is if it's in your district, call the meeting. Get the right people together, you know, the community, you know, who to touch with. If something like that has, gonna have an impact, make sure you're the one that calls the meeting and puts that together. If you can't do that or you're unwilling to, I'm happy with that. So I think that's what we should do moving forward. And when these come forth, if we leave it to the developer, we're always going to be disappointed. I think the community is going to be disappointed. I think we're in a better position to call those meetings, put the right people together, inform the public and then let them feel like their voice has been heard from the very beginning. So I'll put it on all four of you, or all the four of you, but if you can't do it, um, let me know it on all calls. Uh, anyone from the public here comment on the side of?
Harry Scott, one eighty Southwest Third Avenue. You know, it's real easy to say something when it's not in your district. Real easy. Because I've been in many commission meetings when you have said, we don't want a few people to decide anything. So with three folks being there, that was a little unfair. Those was the three that got the notice. The other ones got the notice that they answer and that they, uh, just a few hours. How unfair for that. It's easy to say something when it's not in your district. The thing is, this community understands development is coming. It is not that we are against development. It is not that we do not want something there. We want to be heard and included in what is there. In District One, you wouldn't ever build anything without that community. In District Three, you would not. I've been in many commission meetings when this community of those communities have been heard. And all we are saying, when you come to District Two, let us have a voice also. We understand that something is going to be there. We are not saying, don't build anything there. But give us a chance to be heard. Don't come with your arrogant self, just telling us that something is going to happen. It's unfair. Let us also have a voice in this matter because it's going to affect all of us. That's all. We never said we don't want anything. Don't think when we come up here, we are just against it. No, we're not against. Just let us be heard. Let that community be heard. That's all we are saying. Let if townhouses come, let it be known townhouses come. If you're going to put a drug store there, let it be known drug stores coming. But let the community be heard on it. Don't let a lawyer that came up here that wasn't that mean give you this fuck. Because how unfair also. This community, mayor and commissioners just want to be heard. That's all. We just want to be heard, a part of the decision that is being made there. Those are those folks home who's been there for years, just want to be heard. Can I please have an extra read? Sure. Thank you. They just want to be heard, that's all. Spare them that much to be heard. Do what we have did to many other developers. Make them have two and three meetings with the commu-, I mean, with that community. Just not one. He said, we only have one, we got three, so we thought it was unnecessary. How arrogant. We thought it was unnecessary? No, go back and do it again, see what we can get out of it. Because we did have a community meeting and they did come. They did come. So that means if he would have went back and gave proper notice or walked the community, like we have seen many others do in this city, walk the community. Because why do you go partnership with the community? So that's all it takes. And I believe people would have been as humble to come again. Please, please, you're, thank you.
Can I ask you a question with all of that? Are you for or against this? You want to be heard, now's your chance.
I am for development coming when the community is included.
Are you for this developmental change you said here?
I am for developmental change when the community is included. Now, mayor, if you all tell me that you going to say to this developer, go back and meet with this community, then I'm for change.
Okay. Anyone else in the public here comment inside?
I live in sixteen hundred and a half away in the field. I'm just very curious. I know this is just the first reading, but between the first and the second, I'd be very curious to know the size of those townhouses that proposed and especially the price range. I think that's probably a major impact that I could afford it and not afford it, especially in District Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to comment?
Good evening, Mayor. Gwendolyn Cloughery, fourteen thirty Southwest Sixth Way. Um, yes, I understand there was a meeting with the community and only three people showed up. I also understand from the residents that they're very concerned about this development coming. It's not that they, we don't want development to happen in District Two. And if you look at the radius, the area where the notice is going to be sent, a lot of it included, uh, the Sanheim Preserve. So, uh, when you talk about getting out to the community, you really have to look at who's receiving the notices in, uh, that community. Now, that area, yes, it is rezoned, it is zone B one, but the across the street is residential. So I would like to know if the developer ever thought about having rezoned residential and building some homes, some single family homes, uh, on that property. So that is my question, uh, mayor. And also to say that we're looking at the linear park and we're looking at how that development impacts on the linear park. Then the traffic, you're talking about the traffic in that area. Though that street isn't very wide. And, uh, as I heard the, uh, attorney say, well, you're going to give some of the land so that the road can be widened. But that is going to bring a lot of traffic. Eighteen townhomes, how many bedrooms? How many families are you, are we talking about? Now, we're talking not just eighteen people. We're talking possibly more than, a lot more than that. And the amount of traffic that that's going to bring into the area. Um, I think that at the next meeting, when we see the, uh, site plan, uh, and if there is a meeting in between now and then, uh, we need more information about this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Derek Caldwell. I live at number one Southwest Fourth Terrace. Um, me and my mother have been living there fifty years when it was dirt road on the other side. Um, I'm not really against the project, but the thing is, well, they said that, uh, they sent out a notice. And my mother, uh, sent it eight years ago. And, uh, a lot of elderly people around there, they didn't get the notice, a lot of can't really read. So they have to wait till the kids come home, but you know, the reader, she wasn't, but they didn't notice. They say, uh, the preacher down there was saying this is going to have a meeting, he didn't say the meeting will not wait. But, um, and the other preacher down there, they didn't, they don't get along, uh, at Bethlehem. So the other, the dude said that, uh, they didn't want nothing to do, Bethlehem ain't want nothing to do with. So, but my thing is, it needs to be addressed right there on Ten Street because I've done a short survey. Took me thirty minutes, me and four friends, just to turn off Ten Street like five o'clock. And then with, uh, eighteen units and, uh, forty cars, it's going to be eight. So it's going to have a mess. Fire, fire is going to be busy. They have multiple accidents. So, uh, they need to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Janice from our Tigger, ten ninety Southwest Fourth Terrace, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I was one of the three, four total, the solo four because it was, and the pastor and one of the parishioners, a lot of shift and the other, um, two others from his company that came. He did get a notice one day ahead of time. Everyone was not properly notified. Um, even got a little comment that, hey, could we bribe you with, don't, you can't bribe me with anything. First of all, I've been living there for almost thirty years. We have no desire to be, not that I'm not saying we're bought in, but don't just kind of impose and drop something on us without us having to say so in it. Um, I, I'm totally against it. I think we need to be heard by, the community needs to be heard at large. There needs to be a meeting held. And yes, I was the one that knocked door to door and on churches and left notices that you didn't answer on your door with a site plan, with, uh, documentation of the letter that I received from the city on planning and zoning so that every one of our neighbors in that area around that block got the information. And we turned out twenty-one people. And those people, and those, our residents came, even the, uh, family members of the elderly ones that cannot come, that do not live right directly there. Their children came to support. Um, that strip down, down the street where the Brazilian market area is on Ten, I, I don't see where the traffic is such a bad thing here. Um, I would rather see single family homes one level. And if you're going to buy there, then I think you should live there. Don't come there and, and six months later, like it's been happening in our area, sober houses popping up, they're saying it's not happening. Reentry homes popping up, they're saying it's not happening. And it's there because we see it. And I don't believe it's not safe. Once you put those walls up of those, uh, townhomes up in eighteen townhomes, the children are going to lose place to play. You're going to lose the traffic because they said they did a traffic calming study. That is not true. That was not done. The traffic is horrendous coming through there. People bin my space in my yard every time they bin that corner. If you're standing in your yard, you better back up because you, you're likely to get hit. So that's not true. That study was not done. So we need, you, you need to, to come and really sit with us. And yes, put a tent out there with some chairs and, and, and let y'all come to us. Don't make us come to you guys. Come to us. Let us tell you how we want things and respect where we live because we pay taxes there. We bought our homes there. We don't want any and everybody just to know the, uh, snowbirds coming and buying a place, renting it out, putting it on section eight. We don't know what type of safety is going to be there. If something happens to us on the other side of that bill, on that, a linear walkway, no one's there to see you, to protect you. It's going to be crime, it's going to be traffic and it's going to be accidents. So we better think hard, we better think long. And you guys need to come straight, you need, thank you. And you need to also come correct when you come into the neighborhoods because like Mrs. Scott said, you will not just walk the streets and do it anywhere. So I think that it, we're, we have definitely been treated unfairly in this situation. And I thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janet Kears. I live in.
I'm so sorry, ma'am. Am I speaking to the microphone or?
Yes, my name is Janet Kears. I live and own property at eleven eleven Southwest Fourth Terrace, Deerfield Beach, Florida. And I'm here to speak on behalf of this property at Ten Street and, uh, park, the townhomes. And for the record, I'm not against development either. I know change has to come and change is a good thing. I worked for B S O several years and they took us through a train who moved my cheese. So you know, change is going to happen. So we are, I am not against change. I'm not against the development, but I do have concerns. And my concerns, much like the ones who spoke before me, have to deal with the traffic situation. You know, the, um, traffic in and out of neighborhoods, how this is going to visually look on Ten Street. Because this is a residential area and all of a sudden you want to have three story, eighteen units, three story townhouses. And the reason I know this is because I was at the meeting and they did have a picture of the proposed townhouses and they're beautiful. I didn't, I didn't have any objection to the way they look. They look great, but I just don't feel like maybe two stories, maybe fifteen units, something a little bit less. And I understand what everyone is saying about this being much better than what is currently zoned for right now, you know. But it's going to be rezoned, so why not consider doing it a little bit on a small, a smaller scale? Uh, one of my other concerns is, as Janice raised, uh, renters. These properties, yeah, they're going to be bought and people are going to own them. But eventually if people do rent out these properties and then how's the upkeep going to be? How's that going to affect the neighborhood? And also I'm concerned about the construction itself. I heard nightmare stories about previous communities that have had to deal with construction, uh, with it, tearing up the foundations of their homes. These things need to be addressed as well. Okay? Um, I do realize that this type of thing could be political in nature. And I realize that this property is going to be developed, just like everyone else said would like to have a say so. I'm simply asking you not to move forward on this tonight. Let the, us meet with the developers and then take your point there. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shannon. I live in eleven hundred and eleven in Southwest Fourth Terrace. Honestly, my neighbors articulated everything better than I can, but I do think, and I wanted to know, I think it's telling the tone that was used to talk about the neighborhood. I thought it was interesting that immediately the name, my community was vilified, three people showed up. I'm a graduate student. I can't show up at that time. And my neighbor noted there are elderly people there. So even the tone before development starts, we can already see how the power dynamic is shifting, right? These are the people who are coming to shift the neighborhood and why wouldn't you all want that? Almost like the stage in there. Why, why wouldn't you guys want these people to come in and build this great community for you guys? As if the family. As if the families, as if the families and communities there, particularly their voices are important, and I wanted to note that. And I also wanted to thank, uh, the, the guy who spoke, as well as everyone here. Because the way that we can frame this community, my community. And talk about changing the very nature and fabric of it, when we've noted, their families have lived there for fifty years and more, everyone knows each other. And we can just kind of talk about it very casually. It makes me honestly activated, and I'm gonna join up with Terry, because maybe we need to change the nature and fabric of meetings like this. Thank you.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question, you're for or against the zoning change?
As my neighbor stated, development is coming. I just want to have a voice, and I want the tone to change with how we're regarding it.
So you don't have a opinion at this point?
No.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Daniel. I live at ten forty-one Southwest Fourth Terrace. I made my home since nineteen seventy-three. And I'm excellent, not result. It's all right to have the same family home in there, but townhouses, you're gonna block the deal, block the area. And basically, because I kids are locked down. My kids were raised in that neighborhood. And I didn't worry about it, because all the neighbors moved in, and the neighbors moved in. I'm eighty-two years old, and I don't need, I don't need to block my area.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is John Williams. Address, one fourteen Southwest Seventh Court. Which I own multiple properties in Deerfield. Born and raised, been in Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church since I've been born. Church been over eighty years. Okay, everybody up here said all kinds of good things about what's, what they feel about the community. But my thought is, it should be single-family homes. Because eighteen units is just too much. I'm for development, I'm in the real estate business. But eighteen units, I think is too much for that community. We need development, Deerfield is the greatest city to live in, you can, but that's always so great, and I know that you all are gonna vote. No, not vote tonight on that, because we, we need to communicate more, we need to talk. We want this developed, matter of fact, maybe I can use the business. But anyhow, but, um, I think we need to not vote tonight. And this, this gives developer, and, uh, of course, we, we, we'll get something done, as I feel, you know.
Excellent.
All right. But I'm, I'm for change, but not eighteen units, I don't think. Less the units or single-family homes, okay?
Thank you.
Hey, um, May Francis, thirty-five hundred Southwest Central School of Art, City of Deerfield Beach. I'm for change, but for the right change. Eighteen units, I can't, I can't even grasp how you're gonna put eighteen units on that property. Because from my understanding, Bethlehem owned the parking lot to the east. And I don't think Bethlehem, and I think that since nineteen fifty-five, have any intentions of selling that property. Okay? So with that being said. It bothers my mind how people can sit in a position and could tell us how we supposed to live. But if we put something inside your village, every hell would, or heaven near it will be rolling. It's, it's just phenomenal how people can sit and tell us how we supposed to live, like we're savages or something. We're human beings, just like everybody else in this country. Our skin may be dark, that's about it. But your blood runs just like mine, and I don't think it's fair. That people can sit up on this dice and tell us how we supposed to live. I guess next time you're gonna tell us how to eat too. It's not fair. Give us the opportunity to respect. It's no longer the time that you can come to my house and lock it in when you get ready. Okay? It's time for change. And it's time for you to give us the respect and do this for you too. It's a shame that, that you wanna tell us how to do this and how we supposed to be happy, if we can come to your meeting. This is not your meeting, it's ours. A lot of us was here before you came, and we'll be here when you're dead and gone, thank you.
Thank you. Are you for or against the zoning change?
I am for change, but eighteen, uh, things like Mr. Lorraine said, my car for air. It's not fair.
So it's about the units?
It's, if you open, uh, three stories, it's going over the house.
Thank you.
How y'all doing today? My name is Jackson, and I grew up in that neighborhood.
Mr. Jackson, I need you, I need your real name and your address, please.
My name is Richard Jackson. I grew up at one fourteen Southwest Fourth Court. Just down the street from the property that, uh, you guys are planning to build on. But I was forced to move from that property, didn't sell to the church, they called it the zone. And now I live down the street, and that's six second one Southwest Twelve Court from that property. Now I want you to know that I'm not against change. Because if you stand at Tenth Street and look down Second Avenue, you'll see that that neighborhood needs change. It's been like that for fifty-nine years since I've been there. So my thing is that, like the young man said earlier, we just wanna be heard. See, I'm hearing there's gonna be five thousand houses, RVing, and whoever, so that means that strange people are gonna be hanging around. We need to look out for the children, because of the traffic. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of things you gotta consider before we start this building, you know? And we just wanna be heard, just, just wanna know what's going on in our neighborhood before you just come crashing through with your students. Telling us what you gonna do, and not what we gonna do. Okay? So, that's all I never say.
Are you for or against the zoning change?
I'm for, I'm for change. I'm for change.
Is zoning change, or is it changing it all?
I'm not sure about the zoning, because like I said, I was forced to move out from, you was forced to sell our property. My grandmother was a farm. And she paid for that property, and, and, and as I was a little boy, I remember her paying for that property. And she used to tell everybody around the neighborhood, when I sell, but most, which the older folks both died and their children sold. So I'm not with the zoning, but I am for change.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Vice Mayor. My name is Pastor Ron Harper. Uh, I am the past, senior pastor, uh, of the King of Ministries at Fourth Street Southwest Tenth Court. I believe with my, my name or my location brought up several times. I was gonna sit back and not say much, but I think it's, it's just relevant that I get up and say something. Uh, first thing I wanna say is that I'm, I'm also, I'm in a, I'm in a peculiar position, because number one, I serve this community. Okay, and number two, I'm totally for development, and I'm for the project. Okay, but at the same time, being here, I hear the hearts of the people that are in the community, and I understand their concerns. Um, at the same time, in my, just my thought on it is that, yes, come back, meet with the community, hear them out. I don't think I heard anyone say that there, except for maybe one, even that one, that anyone is totally against the project. They just wanna be heard, so I think a lot of things can be solved if we just hear them out. One of the reasons why I'm totally, uh, for the change is because where my church sits, um, right now, most of the time, there's, there's kids using that field for dirt bikes. And the noise and the dirt and the dust that kicks up at the church, they even come into my parking lot sometimes, they make skid marks in the parking lot. So, um, I, I don't see it getting much worse than, than what I have experienced on, on a regular basis. Um, um, like I said, I'm for the change. I was actually looking at purchasing that property. Um, I've been in the community now for ten years, I've been serving the community, but I've been a part of that community years ago. My grandfather used to have a farm that I picked beans in that community years ago when I was a child, before I knew it was work. And once I found out it was work, I, I kinda left. But anyway, uh, you know, I'm, I'm for the change, but again, I, I just, uh, and I, and I also have a good relationship with, uh, with the developer. Uh, I, I know his projects, I've seen his projects, uh, in the city of Pompano. Uh, we met, uh, just prior to him building and purchasing that, that property. And, uh, so, uh, but I'm not one-sided in this, like I said, I have to serve this community, whether you guys approve it or not, I still have to serve this community. So, uh, and like I said, just my suggestion to the developers and to everyone else involved, you know, set up that meeting, hear them out, you know, uh. And again, you know, just in my closing, I am for, I am for the project, I am for, and I understand, uh, the three-story unit. In order to put parking underneath that, the parking underneath the bottom, uh, eliminates cars on the, on the, on the streetway. So it eliminates the traffic, you know, and having to have to go around the cars, so I get why it has to be three cars, so, uh, but again, that's my take.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Chandler Jackson, three eight six Southwest Thirty Fifth Avenue. I'm with changes, and I do agree with the community. Whatever they decide, the developers should come and meet with the community. And have the community to help decide what should be developed here and what zoning should be there. I just came up to Bean, I really came up here, Pastor Harper, I don't know what Bean Field was there. My father, my grandfather was one of the biggest farmers here in the city of Deerfield, being on half of my house, and it's old. So I just wanted to correct that, and I just wanted to correct that. Okay, so I just wanted to say that.
I, I did not say the Bean Field, I said, I, in the city of Deerfield, there was me, I had that wrong. I did not say, and I told you about a people, in the city. So if I, if I misspoke, I apologize, but I would not say, I did not say that. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, I'm the Commissioner. My name is Johnny Hammond, I live at three six three Southwest Eleventh Street. And I understand that, yeah, there was a meeting. The only problem with me not being at a meeting was I received my notice on the day of the meeting. My mail normally runs in the afternoon, so there's no chance of me to shift focus on what I gotta do at the meeting. But just to touch on what was said, I agree with everyone that is said. I don't agree with the townhouses, I agree with single-family homes, and I think that, you know, that's for the community. Uh, but the problem is, there should have been another meeting called, don't think I wouldn't have showed up at the meeting, because I live right around the corner, I would have walked around the church. But that's the problem, a lot of us didn't know until it was too late. So now, my thing is, I'm not against development, but the city's gonna grow. If it doesn't, it's gonna get stagnant, so I'm always in favor of development. Or we wanna have, as the other speaker said, we would like to, come to us and hear our concerns about the community. Like, uh, one of the gentlemen spoke earlier about sitting at Tenth Street and taking hours to get a turn. We have people that come off Dixie Highway, come to our neighborhood, making us an outlet to Tenth Street, they don't realize they have to stick away. And they be riding when they come through, trusting. And so I was tempted to go and put up some signs and say, drive with your children, because we do have children in that community. So on, for the record, no, I'm not against development, I'd love to see the town grow. Let us do it the right way, let's do it in a way that it benefits both the developer and the community. As the elderly lady just said, she don't want her air block, she don't want her view, not, and I think she has that right to want that. So I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public person here? Anyone check online? For this Harvard meetings, Katie Freitag?
Evening Commissioners, Katie Freitag, four eighteen Southeast Second Street. My whole thought is, obviously, when the guy first said that only three people showed up to his meeting, um, obviously, that should have been a red flag. Um, definitely should have scheduled a second one after that. Um, I understand, and I also see, because I, I, my house isn't very far from that neighborhood. I also do see a lot of the dirt bike, the kids on dirt bikes riding up and down that particular piece of land. Um, maybe the city can look at giving the kids another place to ride their dirt bikes on, um, with, with this project moving forward. I also agree with a lot of the people, eighteen is really way too many to pack into that small neighborhood, um, that small street. Garn, garnering that eighteen equals no less than fifty to fifty-five cars between those eighteen locations, those eighteen townhomes. Each townhome is a two-bedroom, looking at two to three, even four people living there with vehicles. That's gonna be a given. If you put single-family homes in or townhomes in, you are not going to be able to stop people from renting them out. There are so many Airbnbs all around my neighborhood that are all single-family homes. You are not going to be able to stop that, and I know it's right to say, well, just because it's a, a townhome, it's gonna be rented out. Well, people are renting out regular single-family homes all around me, as Airbnbs, VRBOs, the whole nine yards. Um, the one thing that I do wanna make sure that the developer is understanding is, because of that being on one single city street. There is not a separate way to do an entrance and an exit for the construction. So there's gonna need to have some special, um, uh, special attention to be paid to the construction on that street. Knowing that there are a lot of houses right on the, you know, fifteen feet, twenty feet away from where the construction is taking place. So that, I definitely hope that the builder will take that into account. Find a way to be able to, um, be as easy on the residents across the street from them as possible. Um, and make sure that there's plenty of space for parking. And maybe the city even needs to look at, um, addressing the fact that there should be no city street, no city street parking on that street on either side. To keep all of the parkers, all, all the extra cars taken care of in a proper manner. Um, I, I'm like, I'm for constr, I am for the, this development, I am for this rezoning. Because you do not want a bar, you do not want a car dealership facing you, you don't want that. You would rather have residents who will take care of their property and become your new neighbors, and that's how it needs to be addressed. And I hope that's how things are doing, moving forward. More meetings, more involvement from the community, but this is a development that is moving in the right direction, so I. As well, thank you, Derek, I'm done.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you'd like to speak, I'll come up to the mic.
Mr. Mayor, may I just have two minutes?
Uh, not yet, so welcome to the public. And I'll see anyone really positive to the public.
Yes, sir, um, I do appreciate you's input, but let me first start my apology. All right, and, and if my tone was somehow offensive and I would, that's not, right? That's on me, and I humbly apologize, I think it was, but I realize perceptions are different for everyone, and if that was the case, I, I do humbly apologize. Nothing was meant that way. Just to clarify, and I want to reiterate, we'll have two or three meetings. If we need a postponed second reading, until we have those, we're fine with that, we'll continue it, we're not seeking to rush this through that. But, um, and Commissioner Preston, I will be in contact with you tomorrow to help you facilitate the meeting. We mailed that meeting notice ten to twelve days before the actual, or, I guess what they say about the post office. How it delivers mail is very true these days, because it was almost two weeks before the meeting that we know that, I'm hearing of people in debt till the day over, the day after. That's a shame, we thought we did what we could do, but we'll rectify it for a second meeting. And then, the last thing I just wanted to do, to give her a lot of information about traffic. Um, there was a traffic statement done, that was part of this application, it's analyzed by your staff. Just so you know, if the, if, if a project generates more than five hundred trips, a full-blown traffic study required. In this case, there was a traffic statement. And just so you're aware, the traffic statement, traffic engineers look at things and base their, the impact on both AM and PM peak hour trips. As you're all aware, you see lots of development applications up here. Um, the traffic statement showed that there were nine AM, AM peak hour trips and thirteen PM peak hour trips. Now, uh, again, so the residents understand, I'm not saying that's all that's gonna be, but those are the generally the busiest time of the AM and PM peak hours. And that was analyzed by both our traffic consultant and then reviewed by the city staff, professional traffic consultant. And we look forward to meeting with and working with the residents. I will also tell the residents that following this item if they want, I will put a sign-up sheet outside, they can write the names and emails down, so besides coordinating with Commissioner Preston. I'll be able to coordinate with everyone who's here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I will say this, this is still very early in the process, there's a long way to go. I, I will say this, this is still very early in the process, there's a long way to go, a lot of the issues are brought up tight, are things that are gonna be determined well after, you have to make the determination on zoning first. Once we get past that hurdle, there's a lot more to be decided, a lot of the things that were brought up tight, a lot of the concerns, we're certainly gonna be brought up then. The key points about the zoning are this, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Power and Mr. Santucci to help me with some of these, just to make sure I have this correct. But, the existing code the way it is now, if they need the existing code, they can come in, and they don't have to come before us necessarily. They need the existing code, it comes in, they'll come before us, but we don't really have a lot of ability to stop certain projects, is that correct, Mr. Power?
That's correct, I didn't come before you for development review, but not use.
Right, so if they were to come in and said they want to put in a bar or restaurant there, we wouldn't be able to stop them necessarily from doing that, we would have some ability to make adjustments to it, we wouldn't have to stop. And look, when you go from a empty lot in there forever, and it wasn't bean fields, so we know it wasn't bean fields. But let's say you have an empty lots where they're grown, and I grew up on an empty lot, I knew what it was like, so all the kids played there, that was the best spot to have. Nothing was more heartbreaking, you come home and see a house built there. You say, wait, if they can't do that, well, you know they can't. Eventually that lot, those empty lots are gonna get built. Now, the way the zoning is now, those lots can be filled with something that I think is gonna have a lot more of a negative impact on the community than going to residential. Now, you wanna talk about townhomes, number of townhomes, single families, the issues like winters, as someone pointed out, that's gonna be a problem no matter what. But, going from zero to something is gonna be a big impact, without a doubt. So, so that's gonna happen, but you, you know, that's just what happens in progress. But, changing this zoning to residential compared to the commercials that's there, could go there now, is a lot better situation than what we currently have, right? And, and that's why, I, I, I think we need to move forward to make sure we have many meetings on this. This is only first reading, if we don't have meetings, and I'll tell the developer this, if we don't have meetings by the time this comes before us, then you're not gonna get our support, my support. But have the meetings, find out what everybody wants, and I think you guys will do a good job with that. Do not trust the mail system to get anything out. I am getting stuff for things that happened in February last week, so that's a lot of fun, so. Don't trust the mail system, but I think the best way to do is work with Commissioner, whatever it is, we can make it happen and get everybody together, because everybody wants to be heard. And I think, once everybody understands what's really happening, and look, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now zoning allows for it to go to 45 feet in height, is that correct, Eric?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so if you go to 45 feet, right now, 45 feet with the zoning that exists right now, if they were to come, and we would have been able to stop that, couldn't they, because it would be the code, correct?
That's correct, sir.
That's correct. This changes it and goes down to 34. We can hash that out, whether you like 34 or not when it comes into it, but you got, you have to change that zoning, because something else coming there would be 45. And that's a big problem, and you don't want that. So, we're, we're in the early stages of this still, I think there's a lot of work to be done, but I think we'll get there. So, you know, however the word got out to you tonight, I hope we use that same system because y'all showed up, so thank you for doing it. Commissioner? Commissioner Partas?
I don't know.
Okay, we have a motion, you might hold it, while we have, if there's anybody else? Commissioner Preston, Commissioner Drosky?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to say, thank you for everybody coming out and being able to voice their opinion, this is a platform for you to come out and be able to express yourself, and it's important, whether anybody of you agree or disagree, for you to come out and say exactly how you feel about an issue. I will say that if you talk to Mr. Schiff, you will find that he is a good person. He is, he is also a reasonable man. And, I will tell you that he will listen. I am confident in that, there were some questions about townhomes versus single family homes, and, you know, rental. Single family homes is how you build a community, it's the stability of any community. But I will tell you, there is a lot of homes, like in my area, that are purchased, that are being rented. People bought, bought the property, they purchased the home, and they're still being rented, so the rental ideal will not go away. 18 units, the reason that there are 18 minutes there, let's face it, you'll make more money than building four or five homes. You simply will make more money, which is nothing wrong with that, because that's what he's in business to do, to make money. Whenever you introduce a plan to a community, or whatever the project may be, there is three considerations I think that ought to be there. One is residential consideration, what is it, what is it that the residents want? And I think that if you would have listened to everybody here, you didn't hear people here saying, I'm against this though, blah, blah, blah. What you heard more is they just want to be a part of how you come into my community. And there is absolutely nothing wrong with that. So residential consideration is a good, is a good thing. If you get residential consideration, I will guarantee you, you will get community buy-in. There is no doubt, you will get community buy-in because there is, is a platform then for communication. Somehow in the process, it was error. But if you hear the voice of the people, you didn't get a bunch of angry people saying, no, 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 I don't want this to my community. What you heard by and large was, let me be a part of the process, and there is absolutely nothing wrong with that. I think that's a good thing, why? Because it shows that they care about, care about. And more than anything, when the project comes into the community, they're going to help it. Community buy-in, and when you see a person like Pastor Harper come up and give his point of view, he's a person that has been involved in that area, he's been there for the long, and his integrity is, is stellar. He's a good man, he cares about that community. And so, it's a matter, it's a matter of everybody communicating for the betterment of the community. And I think that there was a general consensus that, that, and I've been assured, that the, the, Mr. Schiff and his team is willing to meet with the community, and so based on that, I think that that becomes great. That becomes a platform for communication, so that we can, you know, move ahead. And we'll see what happens when it comes back to second reading, because I'm gonna tell you, I'd be more than happy to get that meeting together, but if it does not happen, the people are gonna tell me. And then, we'll have some issues, because you're the promise now on the floor to work with the people, there is nothing that, there is a there is a, there was a, a, a project here in Deerfield, a rather large project, like, it was larger than this one. And everybody in that particular community said no. They did not want it. And, and I asked for a meeting to take place, I asked the developer, would you be willing to talk with you, and he said, yes, I would. He sat down and talked with the community, and he is now an ally, not just to the community, but the city of Deerfield Beach, because the people embraced this project and it grew. And there was a good relationship, we can always have that. It's just a matter of consideration and understanding of whatever it is, that the people in a particular area, what they want. And I wanted to say this to the people that spoke, people that live in the district, my constituents, I am happy that you're able to come out and voice your opinion, however unpopular it may be, you have the right to do so. That's a good thing, but you also sent a message, that you're not against progress, just want to be a part of the process, and there's nothing wrong with that. Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Commissioner Drosky?
Thank you, Mayor, I wanna wholeheartedly echo Mayor, your and Commissioner Preston's sentiments tonight, I don't wanna repeat what you said. But I, I do want to also thank the residents for coming out and make your opinion known, and I wish this would happen at every meeting, to be honest with you, to have that community input and feedback is invaluable. And one of the things I heard tonight, the residents, was about the rentals. And I'm not so sure, Commissioner Preston, that there's nothing that we can do about it. Mr. Finer, I'd like your client to think, you know, about imposing a rental restriction, you know, maybe for the first two years on, on these units going forward, because I am concerned about, you know, the turnover, we do have a short term rental problem in the city of Deerfield Beach, maybe that's one way of resolving that, is to, those folks that buy from the get-go are invested in the community, and want to live there and be part of that neighborhood, and not just turn it over and rent it and, and make a buck. So maybe that's something that your client can consider, because I'm gonna also suggest that in addition to the community meetings, that you have meetings with all five of us up here as well, either in person or by Zoom, so that we can suggest to you our comments for the project as we get into those devilish details I told you about earlier, so you can hear each one of us. And you just heard from me, what one of my concerns would be going forward, if that rental restriction is something that your client would consider. I think that would help the community, and I hope with the problem that we have with short term rentals going forward. So, I look forward to having that discussion with you. Again, it's just a rezoning tonight, this is the beginning of a very long process going forward, but I think we've set the base for going forward, what needs to happen. And again, I want to thank the residents for coming out, this is very helpful information for me to hear, because otherwise I would not have made all the comments and notes that I, that I have tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Houdak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, you know, the, the community was concerned that progress was moving forward without their voice being heard. And they did the right thing, they came to the right forum, and their voice was heard. And that's what this is all about, this is your community, your seats are your seats, that's correct. This is your meeting, so I do applaud all of you for coming out. I think the developer now sees a couple of leaders within the community that hopefully they will reach out to to make sure that future meetings are organized properly and correctly, as the mayor says, not just rely on the post office. It's kinda hard to do that in the beginning, when you do not know who the community leaders are, you're just coming in. I do not recall hearing one resident recommend that a car dealership be put there, or that a bar be put there, or that a restaurant be put there. And again, the reason for this meeting is to determine the zoning, do we want to change the zoning, so that a bar doesn't go there? So that a car dealership doesn't go there. And, so to that point, I would say that the community is in agreement that as opposed to having a bar there, as opposed to having a car dealership there, that they would much rather have residents there. Whether it's gonna be single family units or townhomes, that's for another meeting. But as Commissioner Drosky pointed out, the developer does have an opportunity to possibly limit Airbnbs, and that is, if these units are turned into an HOA as well, they can have something in those bylaws that prohibit an Airbnb, or just limit the, the number of rentals per year, or whatever the case could be. So there are some tools that they can, they can implement in order to ensure that the stability of this development for the community, which I think is extremely important. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and second Commissioner Partas's motion to move forward to changing this zone to residential.
Your motion is second, we do a roll call.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Partas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Houdak?
Yes.
And Mayor Danz?
Yes.
Here we are now on item number seven, item number seven is an ordinance to the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, meting chapter two, administration of the city code ordinances, article six, code enforcement, division two, special magistrate, section two dash three sixty-one, administrative fines, costs of repair, liens, increase the maximum amount of administrative fines that may be imposed by special magistrate for city code violations, Brian conflict, severability, codification, and effective date. This is second reading, and this does require a forfeit's vote, affirmative vote for.
Mr. Santucci, do you have any comments on this?
I do not have any comments on, on this, this item, Mayor, this item was sponsored by Vice Mayor Houdak, and is on second reading.
Vice Mayor, do you want commentators?
Again, the, the whole reason for, for this ordinance is to give the magistrate the full complement of tools to, to try to get, you know, properties in compliance. It's not man manually magistrate to impose maximum fines, it just gives them the ability, especially with repeat offenders, the ability to try to get homes into compliance, whether that is individuals parked in the front yard, whether that's Airbnb's, you know, not inclined to, to noise ordinances. And, and that is the whole purpose of proposing this ordinance, thank you.
Thank you. I think the point of this is to allow the magistrate to be able to impose heavier fines. Because not all sins are equal when it comes to code enforcement. Someone that has a boat parked in their, in their front yard, you expect to have a lighter reputation. Someone that has a public safety issue, which they don't have a gate on their pool or something like that, and they ignore it, you're just flagrantly ignoring it, creating a public safety issue. And special magistrate should have the ability to drop the hammer and make them feel it. So that's all this does, and I think this is a good new incentive. And, and thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing this forward. Commissioner Drosky?
Yes, you may recall at first reading, I had suggested that we consider adding a factor into the criteria that the magistrate considers going and imposing a fine. I played some mental gymnastics with the city attorney since our last meeting, and have decided not to include the additional criteria that I wanted, which is, you know, whether the violator is the property owner or a renter or not, the factors and criteria that we have in our ordinance now mirror the state statute, and I think that we should stick with those, adding an additional one, while I can justify it, I can also justify it the opposite way as well. So, I just wanted to follow up on that conversation, and not moving forward with that suggestion today, to leave the ordinance as it passed on the first reading, and I'll be supporting it for the reading, like the mayor stated.
Anyone from the public who care to comment on this? Not too many, I'm gonna close it to the public.
With motion to approve?
Second.
Motion for Vice Mayor Houdak, second by Commissioner Partas, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Partas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Houdak?
Yes.
And Mayor Danz?
Yes.
Item number eight is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving amendment to section 3.04, elections and terms of the city charter, to modify the term limit restrictions with the city commission, providing requisite ballot language for submission to electors, calling a special election on the proposed amendment to the city charter to be held on Tuesday, November 8, 2022, providing for submission to the electors for approval or disapproval of proposed charter amendment, providing for requisite ballot language, providing procedure for balloting, providing for notice, providing for related matters, providing for ineffective date, this is second reading.
Commissioner Partas, you presented this, do you wanna start?
Yes, I do. The first thing I want to bring up is that I heard a lot of people at the last meeting tell me, a commissioner should not do this. A resident should do this, so I did a little history check. They also had the dates a little wrong, we talked about 2006. The amendment putting in for the voters, changing from no terms to two terms, was first introduced in 1992 by Commissioner Crackerburg. The first reading was on fifteenth day of December 92, that will make it 30 years ago. It was approved January 5, 93, signed by the mayor, Dean Brock, and attested to by the city clerk. Fact is, the change that we're talking about was introduced by a commissioner. Let us also not forget that all of us sitting up here are residents. Let us also not forget that all of us sitting up here are residents. We did not give up our rights as residents when we became commissioners or a mayor. I've lived in this city for thirty-two years. This is my home and I love it dearly. And I don't look at just one district, I look at the whole city. My whole life, I have been an advocate when it comes to decisions to leave it up to the voters. Now, why did I pick November, that's in the ordinance to be, rather than any other time? Well, let's look at saving money and votes. If we did it during the primary season, all of the independent voters and non-party affiliates would not vote. Only Republicans who have two candidates or more, or Democrats who have two candidates who won't vote in primaries. Seems to me that would be unfair. We waited till next March when we have a city election, only two districts are going to be voted then. That would be one and two. Therefore, in order for the whole city to vote, we would pay a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to open up the rest of the city. November's cost is thirty-four thousand dollars, the cost of doing business. That is less than a dollar per voter of all the voters in Deerfield Beach. In my opinion, you voters are worth at least a dollar, in my opinion, to voice yours. And the way to voice it is by voting. This is not whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, but changing the charter requires a referendum. I'm asking for that referendum to let the voters decide if it's a good idea or they think it's a bad idea. And I'm sorry that there has been a lot of misinformation. People came to me today and said, well, the town hall meeting, did you do this? Did you do that? I could spend the rest of the night reading over three hundred and seventy-five names of people that signed to put it on the ballot. These have been turned into the city clerk as official documents. I didn't make them up. Some of them come from District Four, District Three, District Two, and perhaps even District One. I'm not sure because I didn't do it personally to get all three hundred and seventy-five names. What am I asking for? I'm asking for you to put something in front of the ballot for what I think are good reasons and let the voters decide. Who here would not like to see the voters take action? Just forget the voters, they don't count. They've always counted in this city. I took the trouble of getting a copy of this ordinance that was passed in ninety-three, which gave us two limits, two term limits. In my opinion, we need three, but that's my opinion. But I don't want to make that decision, yes or no. You have to make it. The only way we're going to do that is to put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. Same way we elect officials. Let's talk about that for a moment. There are people sitting up here now that beat incumbents. One of them I know of only had one term. People didn't like him. There are other people that have been up here for fourteen years in one capacity or another because the people did like the way he worked. So I'm not asking you to throw out all rules, but next couple of years, our budget is going to get very close to two hundred and fifty million dollars. And I'd hate to see rookies handling that who may or may not be competent. I've heard comments, well, we could find, we could find people that are competent. Anybody in this room or anybody in this city that isn't a convicted felon as far as, and some probably even if they are a convicted felon can run for an office. Their competency is proved after they've been in office. If they fail, they don't get elected again. Who suffers if the whole commission fails? The city. Experience counts. Three of us up here have been fighting for Penn Street for ten years, seven years, excuse me. I'm holding a meeting in Century Village on the twenty-fifth. I've invited FDOT to come to voice our objection that they haven't kept their promises to Deerfield Beach and that we will not move forward. We will do everything in our power to stop it until they live up to their promises. And even then, if we don't like it, we will fight them. If all three are gone, who's going to fight for us? Who's going to fight for the city? Who's been involved?
I just want to say, no comments from the peanut gallery. Show each other respect. If he's talking, let him talk. When you come up here, he's not going to interrupt you. Please, no comments.
As I said, right now, three commissioners, one, two, and a mayor, have been battling for seven years against a superhighway that would adversely affect the life of many citizens in Deerfield Beach. So Parkland, you get to work fifteen minutes earlier, we would suffer. The businesses on the south side of Penn Street would most likely be moved or go out of business. To me, that's not a very good deal. I've attended almost every meeting I possibly could with our group to fight it, yet three of us very possibly be gone within three years. Who's going to pick up the fight? The voters should decide that. That's all I'm asking for you to do. Let the voters decide in November. You think it's a good idea that we have a third term? Vote for it. You think it's a bad idea? Vote against it. But this is your decision, not ours. It belongs to you. We talk a lot about neighborhoods coming up here. We want that to consult. Somebody asked me tonight, did you hold a town hall meeting? I heard some town hall meetings had thirty people. Two hundred and seventy-five people think it's a good idea that the voters decide. And that's been in a short period of time. Imagine if I had another month, I could double or triple it. I've had people go out and knock on doors. I've knocked on doors. I sat in front of one restaurant in Century Village on a bench and people came out, talked to them. They said, no, the voters should have a say in this. Fine, give them the opportunity. That's what I'm asking for, the opportunity for this commission not to take away your vote. You count. You live here. You should make this decision and at the ballot, not at a meeting, not at a community meeting, but where it counts. There are rules. For instance, we can't sell city property worth over seven hundred and fifty thousand without your permission. Did you know that? Would have to be a referendum. This is a referendum. Make a small change, it either it's good or it's bad, decision is yours.
Thank you.
Richard Drosky? I can appreciate the enthusiasm, deals with my colleagues. I still ask myself, why are we dealing with this? When you say let the voters take actions, the voters already did take action. They've already decided what they want and it was in place. This is not a movement that was born from a massive group of people of District One, District Two, District Three, District Four, saying, we would want you as representative of our district to put this on the ballot. That was not that type of movement. This was born, the idea, this concept was born from the day itself, was born from my And tonight, we have the vote on. I had a district meeting and it was very packed, very well attended. And I asked this very question, how many people want to see the term, the limits extended? There was two votes for, one of the people that voted yes was not from District Two. There was one District Two voter that said yes. Everybody else said no. So, you know, I'm challenged with this because again, if the people was feeling this chamber and saying, we want to see this on the ballot, then you could say, let the people decide. Other people have already decided. And I think that that, you know, to change the city charter, I don't know for what reason we would be voting to change it. It's in place, it has been working, and there is not an issue. And for the idea that, you know, we're going to have a complexity with city budgets, but there are other areas that this, that can be complex as well. I think it's important to allow the process to take place through a list of new ideas of new people, people that will come with, you know, a multiplicity of ideas, imagination. When you do eight years, give somebody else a chance. You know, let them come in, let's see what they're thinking and and how their ideas can actually help the city. One thing I can tell you is that whoever runs for office ought to have a passion. You ought to have done research. You should have gone through a lot of challenges to be able that when you're sitting there, you can actually say that you're representing the people. It's important because they trust you to be able to do that very thing. And whenever they speak, we ought to listen. It's important that we listen. The only thing I can say is that the people have been speaking to me about this issue. I have on this board so many letters, but none, not one single letter is in support. It's not one, that one. So the people did speak. And it makes me think that it goes a little bit deeper because everybody is thinking this out. They're saying, no, I do not, we do not want this. I have not received one letter in support. That makes me think about this. Citizens of Deerfield Beach, give their name, we give you their phone number, I have talked to some and they are back, no. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Houdak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank both commissioners for their passionate speeches. I've thought long and hard on this subject and I can tell you that at the last commission meeting, I really enjoyed the public input as far as as where they would like to see the city built. And then I also had to do some some introspective thinking as far as what's best for the city. I can tell you, three years ago, I wouldn't have run for office if Joe Miller did not turn out. I like Joe Miller. I think Joe Miller did a very good job representing the district very, very well. So I wouldn't have run for office. I'm kind of glad he was turned out because I I enjoy the office, I enjoy representing the community. So I have to look at, you know, my experience as well. And it takes time to grow into this position. It takes a good three years, realistically. There are a lot of people that you have to meet, a lot of relationships that you have to build. There's a lot of stuff that you have to digest. It's not just a couple of hours on Tuesday, wanting to do this job properly. It's it's closer to a full-time job. And if you embrace it, you can do wonders for the community. And it takes special people in order to embrace it, to do wonders for the community. But after eight years, I think it's time to pass the tongue. And I think the community evolves and improves with new leadership, with new energy. And if that person doesn't do a good job, well, I can always run again. There's a lot of institutional knowledge that'll leave when our mayor steps down. He has, you know, worked for this community even before he was elected to office. But when he steps down, it doesn't mean that he's going away. He's only a phone call away to whoever the next mayor is.
I'll change my vote.
Look like you want to do something. The point is, is that just because the person leaves office, I still call Joe Miller all the time. Just because they leave office doesn't mean that their knowledge is gone. I speak to Ms. Peggy Nolan a lot as well. She makes sure that I stay in line and I appreciate it. And so after all the soul searching, and I know that the community still has to speak, but, you know, my position is just one that I think eight years is enough. And, you know, new ideas are important for the community.
Thank you. Anyone else for being open to the public?
I agree.
After the public hearing.
I will say this, because I do want to hear from the public what they said. When this was first, when I heard this was being originally presented, I thought this, we would never even be at this point. This was going to be a dead issue. This was not going to go anywhere. And I did have a problem with the fact that it seemed to be coming from an elected official sitting up here who was going to be tripped under that by himself. So I had concerns with that. And I never thought it would get to where it is now. I had been blown away at the last meeting that it was as close as what I thought. That to me, you know, you might have a few, but the majority is going to say no, you didn't have. I've been very surprised. I've been surprised by what I've heard out of public. I know there's been a lot of misinformation for sure. I've heard public statements made by Commissioner Partes, and I'll even ask him your side, that this was not something that he came up with, that residents came to him with. And if that's the case, that changes it a little bit because that's what the public's supposed to do. You go to your elected official, says, I want to see something changed, bring it forward. I don't think I would have done it the way you did because it does come across that way. And quite frankly, that's a a level of distaste, I think, on this subject matter because of that. So I don't think he should be called for carrying out if what you're saying is correct, that this was originated from residents. They didn't originate it certainly coming to me, talking about that, except for people that were joking around, quite frankly. But now that I see it, it's very different. I've heard from a lot of different people out there that it's surprising how close this is. Now, there's been a lot of different arguments about this. I mean, the bottom line is, this is not about the city commission granting themselves extra terms. It grants the, it allows the city commission making a decision to put it on the ballot, let the citizens decide whether or not an extra, a person can run for an extra term. Now, for those of you who think it's easy to stay in office, it's not. I've been really blessed. Sixteen years in office, when I am done, I've been really blessed. If you look at the history, since I've got been here, two thousand nineteen, District One, we had Joe Miller, who served term to have we had Joe Miller who served term and a half terms, we had Mike Hudak who served one term, District Two. Well, well, actually, we started with Pamela Tillop who served one term, two and a half for Joe Miller, the, uh, Hudak one. District Two, Sylvia Portier had been there. Then we had Commissioner Preston for one, we had Commissioner Bowles for one, and we have Commissioner Preston again for one. District Three, you had Commissioner Popowski, who'd been there for a while. Rosenzweig for one, Arness now for two. And in District Four, it's a little different. You were stuck with me for two years, now you've been stuck with Commissioner Drosky for two years. So it's not a slam dunk to be able to run these consecutive terms, like everybody says, certain districts, it flip flops year to year. So it's not a slam dunk, it's not easy, you still have to earn it. And if you're doing a bad job, the residents are gonna let you go, for sure. I don't believe you should sit up here for life. Now, Commissioner Partes, you brought up the fact that in ninety-three, that was voted on, that was passed, guess what? They didn't stick with it. Zal Kaplin sat up here nineteen ninety-three, two thousand nine. So somebody, you know, something happened in between there, and I think one of the residents who spoke out, um, against this last time, um, suggested that, said, hey, something happened. Um, and I don't recall exactly what it was, but that they certainly didn't stick with terms. And I, I'm sure there are people in the room who will be able to educate us on what exactly happened, but. Um, but, and as far as history, you know, Commissioner Preston, you said previously, it's not broken, it's, well, the issue is, we don't know if it's broken or not. This will be the first time or situation in which you have three potentially completely new people sitting up. That's, I believe this is the first time. And it just happens to fall into the worst-case scenario, which you have a project, it's very contentious. It's been very difficult, and the three people that have spent countless hours in these meetings will be gone. Yes, we will still be there around to participate in. And I don't think any of us, not as much the time as I put in this sucker, you know, I'm gonna go away, I'm just fucking quiet. The truth of the matter is, when I'm not sitting up here, I won't have the power that I do now. I'm not gonna be able to call FDOT and say, Jerry Riley, I want you to be here right now, so you can explain what's going on. I won't have that power. I won't have the ability to fight and debate like I do at the MPO or anywhere else, because I won't be on that board anymore. I won't have the ability to be able to make those arguments. Um, no one's gonna have the history. Everybody likes to say, well, gosh, you can educate somebody on that, I'm sorry. I can sit there with somebody, but I have been in every meeting for seven, eight years. I can tell you what was said, I can tell you the people that were in the room, I can tell you who aren't living what they said, what was promised. And when someone debates that, you're in a debate, you need to have that back. Because anybody that's seen some of these people try to run for office, and spoon-fed answers, and they get up here, once they get past that first answer, they can't answer the second or third questions, because they've been spoon-fed it, they don't know it, because they weren't there. I've been there, I know, they're not pulling anything over on me. I, I'm, I'm a not the smartest guy in the room, but I'm smart enough to know who is. I usually ask them, and I know what's going on. And I have the history on this. But the truth of the matter is, that's just history, there's always gonna be a history. You add an extra term to where we're at now. I get next, if I run for another term, I get elected, Commissioner Drosky, Commissioner Partes. When that turns up, we're gone. So you're still gonna have that, you're always gonna have this merit of three of the five gone. You're gonna have that, this doesn't eliminate that problem. It does have, history makes it interesting, or it certainly makes an issue. Um, but we don't know if it's broken yet, because here's the flip side of the coin also. People are happy with the job you're doing, robbing them, having to do it to keep you in office. That becomes problematic. And I've seen some of the people that have attempted to run for office in this town. When I ran for mayor the first time, second-place person, somebody who floated in here, been here six months, and under oath, after all of the election was over, under oath, with a lawyer present, I have to admit that the only reason that he ran for office is because he had lost all his lottery winnings, and that he needed the money, and that's when he looked at salary, that's why he did it. Under oath, it's what he said with his voice. That's the kind of people you got running for office at times. Now, none of us should be up here forever. Term limits should be in place. Um, and I, I firmly believe that when it's this close, and I'm waiting to hear how many people, where they're at tonight, because it's been interesting, I sat at Commissioner Drosky's meeting, and he just kind of said, he didn't pick a side, he said, what do you guys think? I got to hear it there. Um, I have not had this dramatic influx of people saying not to do this. And that, to me, makes me feel like I'm missing something, and I'm not really understanding what people, I'm surprised by this, to be honest. So I'm really curious to hear what everybody has to say on it, um, to see where this goes. Um, this is something that I'm not comfortable with voting off, because it does affect me, if I decide to stick around. Um, if this goes through, but it's not something, in my opinion, the biggest issue we have tonight, what we're deciding, is do we want to spend thirty thousand to let the people inside? That's the only issue. Otherwise, if it was cost-free, you guys tell us what you want. I'm fine with that. To the argument that says, well, the people have already spoken, the people spoke sixteen years ago. No, sixteen years ago, when it first got, when, when they first truly did term limits and did the staggered terms, I believe that was in two thousand six, we were holding the last meetings, is that correct? That was two thousand, that's a while ago. Keep in mind, back in two thousand, um, just looking at my notes, two thousand eleven, we voted. The board voted to move, uh, the Deerfield Beach Fire Department to be a SO. In two thousand eleven, I voted against us even considering that, because I felt like the referendum had just happened in two thousand seven. It was two thousand eleven, the people had spoke, that was a short time period, we didn't even redo it. I lost that vote, eventually had voted for us doing it, because you had to vote on it at that point. But even getting to that point, I was against. You were for that. You were for that, and, and that was something that had a short window, two thousand seven, two thousand eleven. We changed what the referendum had decided, and we decided up, up here, it's just us. Sixteen years, things change. Populations change, cities change, cities grown, they have different feelings. Nobody's real big fan of politics, nobody's big fan politicians. Nobody wants them up your throat, that's not what's being asked. But in the end, you can destroy this. You can, when, if it goes on the ballot, if it goes on the ballot, you guys can destroy this, you want. Say, we don't want this, send a loud, clear message. I've heard somebody argue, if, what, if, if this goes through, whether it's gonna stop people from doing it again years later. Well, in the end, nobody sitting up here can change that. It's all of you. It puts, it's one of the rare occasions that you'll have the ability to decide on a policy decision made up here. Most of the stuff comes up here, we're left to make that decision. If it's close, we still in the end have to make the decision. This is one of those scenarios. To me, the only issue is spending thirty thousand dollars to get the answer from you guys, which is what I want, is the answer. I'm all about what you want, is ideal. Based on the feedback I've gotten, it's a lot closer than I ever expected. I never expected it to be a second. I'm very surprised, so. Uh, Commissioner Partes, let's you be more workable for you, it's the public, is that okay?
Yeah. Then, I don't know how many people came to your meeting, but I have here, and I'm not gonna read them all, signatures from your district asking that it go on the ballot. Jason Mitchell, uh, John Tell Davenport, Rick Davis, Wiley Simmons, I could go on and on for over a hundred names. People that canvassed in your neighborhood and signed this, asking that it go on the ballot. So, yes, I know you held a town hall meeting, were there a hundred and fifty people there? I doubt it. I don't get a hundred and fifty people at my town hall meetings. The point is, the whole point, the people spoke in nineteen twenty-five when we had the charter made. They spoke again, according to this, when I could read this. A commissioner for the preceding eight years may not appear on the ballot for reelection to the Deerfield Beach City Commission, accepting service prior to the expected date of this ordinance. Signed by Gene Robb, January nineteen ninety-three. First introduced by a commissioner in ninety-two, that's thirty years ago. My opinion, it's time to let the voters get up to date and make the decision. Period. People say, well, the, the people spoke, yeah, they spoke in nineteen twenty-five, why did we change it? They spoke, we had no term limits. Times change, budgets change, people change, neighborhoods change, city changes. Nineteen ninety-two, we didn't have over eighty thousand residents. Now we do. And as you once said in the last meeting about another item, I trust the voters. What am I asking for? Let the voters decide. It's an important issue. Whenever they decide, I will live with it. Apple. Now, people say, well, you want to run for a third term. I'm eighty-six years old, I don't know if I'm gonna finish my term. The guy upstairs may vote for me sooner than that. My health may not be able to allow me to even finish my term, get along, run for another one. If the voters will even allow me to run for another one. There's no guarantee that an incumbent would win anything. This doesn't extend the life of a commissioner. It just gives the voters a chance to say, we like the guy, we'd like to keep him around one more term. That's it. That's what the voters want. A chance to be heard. We heard this all night tonight, I want to be heard in my neighborhood, but I want the whole city to be heard.
Should we let them be heard now?
Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Preston, would you comment?
Yes. I'd like to say my colleague that you read off names of people out of my district. And a lot of people said to me, they did not know what they were signing when they, when they sat up. And I'd like to know from you, there's four districts, four districts, and yet you picked District Two to call off name. Why don't you call off names from District One, District Two, District Three, and District Four, but you didn't do that? I want to know, why are you talking about District Two? Please?
I'd be happy to answer that.
Why?
Because I had a volunteer that was willing to go knock on doors in District Two, who lives in your district. That's why. If I, why, excuse me, if I, I was working on District Three, if I had a volunteer in District One, I would have sent him. If I had a volunteer in District Four, I would have sent him. But I had a person who lived in your district who said, I like the idea, I'd like to go and help you. And you say people didn't understand what they, what they signed is what they read.
Commissioner, Commissioner Partes, put it into that. This is loud, Commissioner Preston, finish with his comments.
Okay, go ahead.
My question, my question is, which you have not answered, why did you read off names from District One? Out of all the names that you say that you have there, I'm sure that there are names from all of the districts.
No, there's not.
You chose to just call it District Good.
We, you know, there's a limited amount of time. I'm sure that you didn't quit your job and just say, okay, I'm gonna go knock on doors seven days a week, twelve hours a day to get paid. Um, we had a limited amount of time since this started. The names that I have here from my district, I got. And a few people that are sitting out there in their buildings. The people that, names that I got from District Two were volunteers from District Two, went knocking on doors. And if I may read this, this is what they were asked to sign. It's only two sentences. We, the undersigned, wish the commission to place the ordinance to change the city charter to increase the eligibility of the commission to be elected from two terms to three terms on the November ballot, so the voters can decide this important issue. And so they were asked to do, nothing more. They read it, they put their name down. I have names from District Two and District Three. If I would have had another month, I would have hit the beach, and I would have hit District Four. In fact, I do have two names. But that's beside the point, it's a matter of time and ability. And it shouldn't matter what district they came from, they all vote in the city of Deerfield. This is a city matter.
Commissioner, you answered this question, you got me there. Commissioner President, I will say this about petition, it is interesting, and, and I, language is pretty clear. As we saw last meeting, someone who signed a petition and said they were against it, and questioned about it, they said, well, what I'm against is I wanted to be decided by the people. Well, that's what you want, you signed the right petition. Petition tells you who supports, petition doesn't tell you who doesn't support.
That's correct.
Say that. And the only way to judge that is at the ballot, but petitions, you know, I'm not a huge fan of, but personally, three hundred and seventy names is surprising to me. Uh, I'm gonna open this up to the public, if you want the public to come up and comment, listen to your name, address, record. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, man, feel free to pull the mask on, stay down, and if it spreads the microphone, it's your name and address, right?
I'm in Creighton, four zero nine seven, U four S, Deerfield Beach, Florida. So I'm a little confused, because what I needed to say, people have spoken. I've been a resident in Deerfield for twelve years, and I've never spoken. I think now, more than ever before, the voter suppression rampant, that the public has the right to voice their opinions.
Thank you very much.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and Councilman, and New York, it's everybody that took the time to come to this very important meeting.
Please name and address for the letter.
Yeah, my name is Melvin Mass, and I live at thirty eighty-one Oak Ridge U here, I'm a resident of Deerfield. I also am happy and privileged to serve, um, just incidentally, on the City of New York Marine Advisory Board. And, uh, just incidentally, we're looking for additional.
Uh, I would still feel the same matter, please.
With regards to the very important matter here, uh, we've heard, uh, Michael Hudak say that it takes one to three years to get up to speed. You know, I don't want somebody here at this commission, you folks have spent so many years in many cases, uh, and you build such a great knowledge, uh, and experience. Uh, I need you to make the decisions. Uh, if the, uh, voters decide, uh, let them decide, uh, on having a three terms rather than two terms. Uh, because there's so many important issues coming up, just to, you know, to name them. The huge budget that you have, all the management that's there. The, uh, Southwest Ten Street, uh, uh, project. These are huge, important projects for our community. We don't really need a new person stepping in at this time. Now, all I'm asking is to allow it to be a fair return, so that if you decide that, uh, you, you no longer wish to serve, then that's fine, and that opens up a position. Uh, let the voters serve. And so, don't take my vote away. I just, don't take it away, don't take my vote away, everybody. And sir, let's vote on the issue, and put it on an open for ballot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm always about fresh ideas, because when we do the same thing over and over and over again, it doesn't make any progress. I understand that we want voters to be able to make these decisions. I have a question, number one, is for the three that have been working with the MPOs. And I've been here since, you know, for a long time, and we've been dealing with Ten Street for many, many, many years. Um, I'm not sure, but can the city of Deerfield, um, send somebody to the MPO as a representative?
No.
You cannot. So, then that being sent, then, like, our mayor or whatever has to be strong. At that point, I think we need though to have more mentoring between At that point, I think we need though to have more mentoring between the commissions. So you all know when your term limits are up. And so there should be some mentoring going on, because people don't know if they're going to vote or not. And afterwards, like the mayor said, he's unseated out, Commissioner Hoodak, I was Joe Miller. I was here when we voted for term limits. I still think they're a very good idea in order to get fresh ideas in. Don't necessarily think that another term is going to change anything for where we are. I mean, you're giving another person another term. Then what happens after that? I don't think that enough people in Deerfield were talked about before this. I didn't even hear about it until I read it on Facebook. So, no, no one that I know even talked about it. So, at the thirty thousand dollar mark that we are going to be having to pay for this election, it's not during a big election, correct? If I'm, is it, are we talking about November? So, we always know that when people vote, and it's not a presidential year, less and less people vote. So I don't think we'd even get a real turnout of voters on something, because people don't necessarily turn out that. So now we're spending thirty thousand dollars to put this on a ballot in a time when people don't typically vote. So, I mean, I can only defer to back to the commission, but I think that thirty thousand dollars could be well spent in other city things that we need. And I think we need to cross the MPO and that, those issues as a mentoring and keep, and keep going on with the current commission, talking to the next commission, and keeping those doors open. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pam Cantor, and I'm struggling with my mask here, so. I live at forty forty-one Lindhurst J in Deerfield Beach. I wanted to be so that the people will be able to vote on this change. Please put this proposal on the ballot. Whether you like the idea or not, let the voters make the decision on the terms. My background is nursing, and I know what happens at shift change. And a lot gets lost at shift change. And lots of things go down. That shouldn't go down. And I think that just seriously think, whether you like the idea or not, the voters should make the decision on the terms.
Thank you.
I say that we, the Bible says, the man born will go home, but sure to die. So that means that nobody sitting here, sitting out here, know the day, not a time. So if something should happen, whatever you have learned, it'll go in the grave with you. It's not going to stay here. So with that being said, don't put yourself on the high horse thinking that nobody can learn what you think that we don't know or whatever. They've been working on Dix, on Kim Streets since nineteen sixty-three. Because I used to live at two twenty-four Southwest C Street, but it was nothing but dirt. And so with that being said, let's, and, and, oh, let me say this, the person that burned it, Commissioner President out there in our community, getting those signature, with the people, he picked the one that he wanted. To go into our community like two snakes. And one, she even turned in a national convention and went for Republican. We have a video of that. So those people are not corporal or whatever to be in our community, helped by getting a vote or signed that petition. Half the people didn't even know what the hell it was hiding. Let's know what it was all about. Like Commissioner President Professor said, why didn't you go in the other community? No, you hired those two girls. I can call the names because I've talked to them. And like I said, they ain't worth the salt, and they're not even worth conversation.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Shetinsky. I've been honored to be a resident of Deerfield Beach for over twenty years. Oh, my address, I'm sorry. Thirty-four Kesworth B, Deerfield Beach. I'm a believer in term limits, but I strongly believe that three terms or twelve years is a very important option to give to the voters of Deerfield Beach for them to consider. Now, as the commission have run out, since nineteen twenty-five, the inception of Deerfield Beach, the term limit question has been voted on at least a half a dozen times since nineteen twenty-five. That's almost, I would say, every generation. The population of Deerfield Beach has examined that question, and they adapted. Either they voted for it, or they voted against it to expand or to give it options. The last time that this question in terms of term limits was brought was two thousand six. That's a generation ago. I think it's time for this new generation in two thousand twenty-two to examine this question, give us an opportunity. Now, since two thousand six, when it was brought before the ballot, there'd been a tremendous explosion in terms of population. We, in the census of two thousand, sixty-five thousand people. Now, two thousand twenty-two, we have about eighty-seven thousand people, and it's growing. One of the, going into the twenty-first century, out of about thirty municipal city governments in the Broward County, Deerfield Beach is only one of a small handful to still be constricted to a two-term limit. I think we need to go into the twenty-first century and give us other options, and I think a three-term limit is something that's very feasible that we should examine as voters. Now, the city commissioners' responsibilities have a myriad of responsibilities. The budget, direct new projects, the Deerfield Beach voters' responsibilities are to give them the tools, the resources. And one key resource or tool is time. So I believe that with these projects, you need time to conceive it, to nurture it, to listen to feedback, until finally you do the ribbon cutting. You need a ten-year, I would say, window to really appreciate these projects and bring it to the people of Deerfield to understand. I'll give you some example. Now, we're saying thirty thousand dollars for this election if it's put on the ballot. Look at some of the capital projects. City Hall renovation, two million dollars. That comes from FEMA. The Johnny Tigner Community Center, nine million dollars, that project. The Center for Active Aging, and also the facility that's for childcare, eleven million dollars. The new infrastructure, man, hold on a minute, thank you. The new infrastructure of money that's going to hit the city bridge in Southeast Thirteenth Avenue, that's a million dollars. Also, the East and West Water Treatment Plants, three million dollars. A lot of these projects, a lot of money, thirty thousand for a voter initiative for us to examine, for these commissioners to do their job, is something that's very important. In closing, I want to say in two thousand one, when nine eleven hit, I was a New York City resident. Mayor Bloomberg coming into the city said, listen, we need to rebuild the city. I need three terms, but I want to give it to the voters of New York City to decide. And he brought it to the voters of New York City, and they voted him for a third term as well as the New York City Council. I think we should have the same opportunity. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol Erna, and I live in Century Village, and this issue has taken me out every time. So, having been in this room for so many years, I know how many people who are sitting on the board, whether it is one or one before, who never even came to a commission meeting until they decided to run. I can speak about someone who didn't run until their police record was expunged and put somebody else in office, and then ran against that person once the record was expunged. So, my feeling, and the gentleman who just left brought up two things I want to say. The only two people I really know who got a third term was, one, President of the United States of America, and that was Roosevelt. And that was during World War Two. And that's pretty reasonable that he needed to stay in office, and I don't think anything here is as important as that. The third one is, as he just said, Mayor Bloomberg. It's funny, but Giuliani was the mayor when nine eleven hit. And that was in September. And several months later, Bloomberg was elected mayor. Why didn't Giuliani stay? Why didn't the people vote for him? But it was Bloomberg who was able to rebuild the city. And I think many of you that came to this commission, and you didn't know anything, and you learned. Yes, I understand being here would be helpful perhaps, but as other people suggested, you should be helping the next person who comes in. And furthermore, it was something else that was important, but you seem to remember, wouldn't it? Wait, let me look at my notes. I don't really, unfortunately, have it, but it was really important. And what I'm going to say is, oh, I know what it was. It is important. In two thousand and six, when the amendment was changed, I haven't heard one person say why it was changed. Now, I would like you to remember, those who know it, it was changed because they wanted staggered terms. And why did they want staggered terms? So that when people sat on the dais, it wasn't five new people. It would be staggered, and that was done, and it's still viable to go that way. And I really think this is a crime.
I do apologize to the diocese. Actually, speaking from the outside, I had a little bit of an asthma issue, and I didn't want to feel coughing in the back of my face, so I stayed outside. But Commissioner President, I would like to say to you that I was one of the people that signed your petition, and I would also like to say to you that I've changed my mind. There are at least maybe five names on there that I would say you can certainly discontinue. Commissioner Preston, I'd just like you to know as my commissioner that I do not agree with this change for extended terms for a couple of reasons. There are a couple of you up there on the dais that are highly respected. And if I had to make that decision just based upon some of you, my commissioner being one of them, I would have no problem at all, just based upon your character and the way that you carry yourself. You lead me to believe that you would do the right thing for the communities. But there are others who I feel that can't do that or wouldn't do that. And for that reason, I think that we would agree that, I will agree that terms, I think, is a good idea sometimes. There are times when it would make so much sense to extend it, but that's just not the way it works. So for that reason, I would say no to the extended terms. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Senator Jackson, thirty-six Southford Thirty Fifth Avenue, and I'm against the diocese having terms. Ms. Perez, I want to speak to you. I'm one of the ones that I feel that you get a violation, okay? Because you made the comment just a few minutes ago, saying that you went around and you're at this and collect signatures. You're going to benefit from that if you get reelected. And that is, again, I feel like it's against the law, okay? You should not be the one. Yes, you are a resident, but you also is on a dais as a commissioner, and you brought this out. And you should not be bringing it out. Okay? So what you did is wrong. If that person came to you, you should have had that person come up here and brought it out. There was a time when Mayor Roberts was here. When you guys was coming to be reelected or for the commissioner one time election, she wanted to have, when the election was done, the city of Deerfield Beach, the big election was with the president. Everybody was against it, because they know the people don't come out, and they feel like less people come out, you're going to keep those positions. So you guys are going to spend money for that? You complained about the money that was going to be spent for that, but now it's okay to spend thirty thousand dollars now, because you want to stay up in that position. And it's not right. As we know, the situation is not strong. I can just speak. You guys is a run the city because you had the votes, but District Two is very strong. I don't believe that. I'm just my, my own commissioner. I have no problem with it. And you know that, okay? But right is right. Right is right. So make sure you know what you're doing, because I just feel like you just violated that law. So you should have no business bringing that up there when you're going to benefit if you get reelected. You can take it how you want to take it.
My question is to Commissioner Frost, I'm sorry, Commissioner President.
Yes.
First of all, I'm in District Two. I didn't hear anything about the ballots being, petition being set around to be signed. I would like to know whom are the people that you sent out to do those petitions? Why are they not here when this item is on the agenda? And why were we in this place?
I'd be happy to answer this.
Okay, thank you. And the other part of that, again, like Commissioner said, the majority of your votes did come from another district. Why not all from your district or yours as well?
Terry Stad, one eighty Southwest Third Avenue. We all know that. This is totally unfair to the rest of them. Because we are right now looking at going up on the war on utilities. But we don't mind spending thirty thousand dollars on an election. But we already have term limits. We already have term limits. Two consecutive term, forty years. It's already there. What more? And I don't want anybody to think that someone else can't come and do the job. It happens all the time. When you all got there, you was not experts. You were rookies. Sitting up here seven years doesn't make you an expert. You just have a chance to sit seven years. It ought to be a compliment that the people reelected you. They thought enough not to run against or come out and vote strongly for you. That's accomplishment. Not an expert. We are glad for what is going on on Southwest Ten. And those who have been fighting. But before any of you were fighting, I was up and fighting. So it's not that the job can't be done. Karen just brought it out. The stagnation to keep everybody from being brand new. The stagnation to keep everybody from being brand new because that was unfair. And don't tell me that Commissioner Doudat and Commissioner Preston can't help other commissioners if they come in office. Don't say that the mayor, Commissioner Parnas, Commissioner Shaw can't help others if they came into office. Good job to help one another. So we are able to. I understand the issue. I will understand the issue. We understand, okay? My biggest thing is we cannot keep burdening the people. I understand. It's a little unfair. Guys, I'm totally against it. Mayor, if you would please. I'm totally against it because it's not what the people want. Commissioner Parnas, you read off names from District Two. What a disgrace to do that. Okay? But the same is, they were led falsely. Alex Chapman went in District Two and gathered names. Commissioner Parnas, you know, because I met with you on the issue, okay? So you know, I know the names of those that went around. I'm not afraid to call names, and they were. And I told you when I met with you, the people was misled. Mayor and other commissioners, they were misled. And some of those folks that I personally, Commissioner Parnas, gave me the list, and I had already talked to many of them. They did it because Ms. Alice and Gail Battle had came to that door. They thought they was doing something right. They just didn't help them, okay?
Appreciate it.
Glenn Clark Reed, fourteen thirty Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. Mayor, Vice Mayor. I had the privilege to sit where you are sitting, and I know why term limits were put in. The entire commission was going to be up for reelection, and that was something that we could not have the entire commission to go out at one time. So that's why the voters or the residents voted for term limits.
Staggered terms.
Staggered terms, yes, staggered terms. And then again voted for term limits. You know, yes, I sat on the commission. I sat there for twelve years. Yes, I did. But I sat there for twelve years because the people signed a petition for that last four years that I was there, and that's how I got to sit on this commission for twelve years. Prior to the mayor, I was the longest-serving person elected in this city. So I can tell you what happened. The issue of Ten Street started years before I got on the commission, but it seemed to, as it has come to the forefront so forcefully at this time, came to the commission at that time. And Commissioner Trenton Taylor, rest his soul, was the one that took up that issue and moved that issue. After a while, we didn't hear anything about Ten Street. It was dead for the longest period of time until your tenure here in the city commission. You know, history, and if history is what keeps a city going, the city of Deerfield has a history. And we know that whatever happens on this dais will affect everyone. Sitting on the dais gave me the chance to learn. After the eight years that I was there, I was ready to leave, but the residents asked to be the state, signed a petition, and Mayor Nolan, and she's still here, can witness that because it happened to her as well for to run again for an office. There isn't, these seats are not yours, and the people get hung up on what it is they can do. And have another minute, and what will happen if they leave. None of you can predict the future. Eight years is enough for the city of Deerfield Beach. Eight years is enough for the President of the United States. Eight years is enough for the House of Representatives of the state. Eight years is enough for the city of Deerfield Beach. I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dan Hertz, three three zero Southeast Nineteenth Avenue. Hello, Mayor. Hello, Commissioners. Why is the commission attempting to...
Please, don't speak. Sorry.
Why is the commission attempting to change the charter? Was there some huge grassroots effort by the citizens clamoring for a commissioner to serve for twelve consecutive years? Why would the commissioners vote to add this charter change onto the November ballot? This change would indirectly benefit the two commissioners from District Three and Four who are term limited and out after two thousand twenty-five. Either one of these commissioners has the option to run for mayor in two thousand twenty-five and extend their time on the dais. That is the fair way, the correct way, to try to stay in office. While the commissioners are allowed to put this question on the November ballot, what kind of perception will this leave in the minds of the citizens? You are voting on something that you will indirectly benefit from. Without this change to the charter, you would not be allowed the possibility of running again for commissioner. If you truly believed that changing the charter was for the benefit of the citizens and not your own political career, you could exclude yourselves from a third term if the charter amendment passed by adding wording that this change would go into effect starting in two thousand and twenty-seven, thus eliminating the perception that you are voting on something that can indirectly benefit you down the road. Term limits were a good idea when I was first voted on by the citizens, and I don't see how anything has changed since then. Existing term limits will encourage new people to run for office with fresh ideas and a new approach to solving the problems our city faces. Please do not let the personal political aspirations of Commissioner Parnas sway the rest of the commission to spend thirty-four thousand dollars of our money on something that does not benefit the whole city. Please vote no to putting this charter question on the November ballot. Now, as an aside, I did run for office three years ago and received over eight hundred votes. While I did not speak to all eight hundred, I can tell you that there is not a single person that I spoke to that voted for me that thought that this was a good idea. So just wanted to share that with you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager. I'm here tonight because I had the privilege of sitting on the dais for sixteen years. Let me explain. Commissioner Reed, or State Representative Commissioner Reed alluded to it, that during, after the term limits were installed and passed, okay, that there was to be two terms, there was a glitch or a little loophole that we were allowed to get ten percent of the registered voters in our districts signatures, and they had to be registered voters to be able to be put on the ballot for a third term, okay? Then, once that happened, we got to run, and it was changed, that it could never happen again, all right? I was out of office. I was in office for twelve years while I was State Representative Wyndham Clark Reed. I was out of office for four years, and I ran again after four years for mayor. So I sat for sixteen years. So any one of you, excuse me, can be out of office for four years and run again. You can run for another eight. So I believe the people spoke, and I know it went before the residents of the community and it was put on the ballot, but I really agree that we knew, I knew nothing when I first took office. Al Capellini said to me, you're going to get a vote on Monday and Tuesday, first and third Wednesday of the month, and you're going to have to vote on those items. I'm going, oh, my God. But you know what? You learn. You have a city manager. You have a city attorney. You have city employees that are going to help you and guide you. So please don't think that, Mike, like you said, you came in here and you're a wet guy in the years, and you had to have a lot of, you know, help from other people, and that's what we're supposed to do. A lot of the elected officials or people that ran for office ran away after elections or ran away when they were no longer sitting up here at the dais. Mark my words. Wyndham Clark Reed and myself are not going anywhere because now I have nine grandchildren that are out in those parks, that are all playing ball, that are in schools, that are in the city doing things. And it's my duty as being a former elected official not to give up on this city and make sure that things are being run right and help everybody here and voice my opinion to you, Commissioners and the mayor. So please, please do not vote for this. I really don't think it would be beneficial for any of you. I think it possibly would hurt y'all because I think the people in this community would get up in arms, and they would go out and they would protest against it, and they would tell people not to vote for it. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
You got two on the agenda. Hi, Darrell Brown, two sixty four, Kets. I think it's really a close call to tell you two. You have those who don't want it to be extended, the three term, those who say, well, let the people vote. You have those who say, you guys should make the decision, but don't let us have to make that decision. And I'm thinking, why aren't we making that decision for you so you don't sit there and make the decision? I think the people should vote. There's enough people in this city to go to the polls, to the ballots and vote, locals. We should be voting whether it's a local election or it's a national election. And I think this is worthy of the people of Deerfield Beach to get up and go to the ballot in November and vote for this, whether they want it or they don't want.
Sorry, ma'am.
That's it.
Thank you.
Can I get my minute?
No, you cannot. It's great to see you. It's great to see you.
Hi, everybody. Kathy Richards, three oh seven four, Holloway F., Deerfield Beach. I've been listening to The Good and The Bad and The Ugly. This is the second time I've heard the people speak the same way they did the first time. Honestly, the way it's going, if you were the deciding factor, you should leave it to the people that vote. The only way it's going to be settled is by the people who vote, not necessarily you in office. That doesn't mean that you're going to get a third term to begin with. You can take Ben Preston, who twelve years ago won four years. Then you lost second term. After that, he came back for another four years, and now he's running for another, so it would be twelve years. That would have been his third term. That's fine. Nobody's complaining. That's the glitch in this whole system. But I really think that it's time to cut this joke out. Let the people vote. Go to the ballot. It is a big election in November. It may not be for the president, but we're voting for governor and a lot of other people. So we think about ourselves, but we've all done a good job. Why not stay? Just bring coffee next time.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. O'Prey.
Thank you, Kathy. Do we have anyone else out first?
We do again.
Yes, I know it's been a while, Carol, and it's been, now you're not up, you've already spoken, but I need you not to interrupt our meeting, please. Ms. Berger, you're not going to get another chance to speak. You've spoken once. Thank you very much. Good. Mr. Adams, I see you off your hand raised.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Wayne Adams, fourteen thirty-one Southwest Five Terrace. And I just want to read a prepared statement that I wrote. It was one of the founding fathers, Benjamin Franklin, who summed up the best case for term limits more than two centuries ago. Franklin said, "In free governments, the rulers are the servants and the people. They are servants. They are superiors." In the early nineteen nineties, there were grassroots efforts to limit the terms of elected officials in various public offices across the nation. Term limit ballot initiatives were placed on ballots across the United States and were overwhelmingly passed in nineteen states, not by small margins either, but usually by landslides. Then, of course, the political operatives, along with their lobbyist friends and dark money, went to work behind the scenes to overturn the voter's will. In my opinion, one of the biggest mistakes the High Court was when the U.S. Supreme Court threw out all state-imposed term limits on federal positions in nineteen ninety-five, but the term limits for state and local officers were left in place. When politicians know they must return to their ordinary life and live under the laws passed while they were in government, at least some of them would think more carefully about the long-term effects of the programs and policies they supported. Their end game will not be reelection because that option will not be available because we have term limits in place, first voted on in Deerfield Beach and passed in nineteen ninety-three. Term limits were reaffirmed again in two thousand and six by Deerfield voters. Commissioners should vote no to have term limits included on the November two thousand and twenty-two election, not just because of the thirty-plus-thousand-dollar cost to Deerfield taxpayers, but because Deerfield Beach voters have spoken overwhelmingly twice before. Eight is enough. Vote no on putting that on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Katie Freitag.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Katie Freitag, four eighteen Southeast Second Street. I got a list, so I'm going to try and go fast. So here we go. Five years ago, Commissioner Parnas was a rookie on the dais. The same with Commissioner Drosky. Mayor Drosky has only been in office for two years and is still considered a rookie. Commissioner Preston has served as a commissioner twice and proved that you don't have to serve consecutively to be effective. There will always be rookies on the dais, and moving to three terms is not going to change that ever. Commissioner just said that people in District Two, over a hundred and fifty of them, signed the petition, yet earlier tonight, a resident of that same district said many of the older residents in that district can't read. So how do they know what they were signing? One hundred percent extends the life of a commissioner. What else is this about? The President of the United States serves a maximum of two terms. There are reasons why this is in place, and like those term limits, it is better for all the people. Stale bread is stale bread. But with the chance that there are three new members on the dais, this is how the system is set, and changing to three terms is not going to change this. I know it's only thirty-four thousand, which is the cost to add it to the ballot, but what does that thirty-four thousand dollars get us? It could get us new equipment for our parks, new infrastructure, repairs to aging equipment in the city, better street lighting, and additional senior or family services. I know that thirty-four thousand isn't much, but it can make a difference to a department that could use another employee or an additional resource to make a better, bigger impact on the city as a whole. At the last meeting, Commissioner Parnas made a comment about women and blacks getting the right to vote. but what does that thirty-four thousand dollars get us? It could get us new equipment for our parks, new infrastructure, repairs to aging equipment in the city, better street lighting, and additional senior or family services. I know that thirty-four thousand isn't much, but it can make a difference to a department that could use another employee or an additional resource to make a better, bigger impact on the city as a whole. At the last meeting, Commissioner Parnas made a comment about women and blacks getting the right to vote. Women have the right to vote because women demanded it. Blacks have the right to vote because blacks demanded it. Why are we doing this again? Who is demanding it? Did three hundred and seventy-five people who signed the petition understand what the issue really is? I don't think they were given all the information. If the petition says it is going to cost thirty-four thousand and people still signed it, I would be surprised. Half of all of the cities in Broward County have two term limits for their commissioners. Just because the other half of the cities have multiple terms does not mean Deerfield Beach should. And it also doesn't mean that they like it. I took it upon myself to speak to a commissioner in Tamarack today, which has three term limits, who stated that they are not in favor of three terms because new life, new blood equals new ideas. And that is what keeps their city moving forward. And in reference to nine eleven, if something of that magnitude were to happen in Deerfield, I would hope that the best person in our, to lead our city would be in place to lead us into do what is right. We have an entire staff, an entire city full of dedicated staff and department directors, including our new position with Rodney Brimlow, that are poised to act and react to whatever the city needs. It is not up to the commissioners-
Another minute, Miss Freitag?
Yes, please and thank you. I'm almost finished. It is not up to the commissioners and mayor to make the day-to-day decisions. They do not determine the budget, nor do they run it. They merely approve it and rely on the staff, staff, excuse me, to execute it. As everyone knows with the situation with BSO Fire, it's a lot harder to reverse a decision once it has been put into place. The bottom line, do we really want someone in office for twenty-four years consecutively? Because that is what can and will happen if this is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Are you going to speak, sir? It's an honor to speak for a commission, mayor, as mayor, commissioners, my friends. Tom Plow, thirty-nine twenty, Northwest Fourth Court. Proud member of District Four. I attended Mr. Christopher Ross's meeting the other day. It was an honor to see you there, sir. Um, I, I feel that the basic distrust in our federal government is the fact that people have unlimited terms. The fact that you can do the numbers and maybe get in there when you're thirty years old and have a political machine that keeps you in there until you're eighty or ninety or Tom Thurmond ran when he was ninety-six, God bless him, he won. And he served his term. So he was a hundred years old, okay? But if people in Congress made a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year, thirty years later, it were a hundred million dollars, that stinks. And I think that, that, that people just don't wanna have term limits. And I've heard twice now the story about, about Bloomberg, so I'll be quick about it. Um, I researched this. My source was the Gotham Gazette. And it seems that New Yorkers voted twice in nineteen ninety-three and in nineteen ninety-four to restrict to two term limits and then that passed by fifty-nine percent. Then we fast forward to nine eleven and everyone, this will be the end of the world unless we keep everybody in and keep this institutional knowledge going and keep everything in place. But yet on New Year's Eve of two thousand and one, three months later, Giuliani left and, because he was termed out. And it happened to be the greatest turnover in government in the city's history. The mayor, the comptroller, the public advocator, four out of five borough presidents of the city council were kicked out of office at that time. Okay, now I heard, what in hell, how did Bloomberg get a third term? Well, guess what? He got his first term and in his second term, he decided he wanted to run a third term. And I couldn't find anywhere that it went up for a public vote. What, what actually happened was the city council voted twenty-nine to twenty-two to increase the term limits, okay? So, uh, now in his, uh, that was after he was in his second term. So the, the city council actually voted in two thousand and eight to, um, to, to do that. Okay, so anyway, now he's in his third term and guess what? His name escapes me, but the fellow that, one of the fellows that ran against him and lost, got his act together. They started collecting signatures. They had it put on the ballot and on November the third of two thousand and ten, in the middle of Bloomberg's third term, the, 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 the issue was on the ballot and the New Yorkers voted overwhelmingly, seventy-nine percent, to limit the term to two years. And that's, they have a third second term. Okay, and so that's where it is right now. They're all limited to two terms. So I, I just feel that people have a, a, a basic distrust in government. And it would be perceived, it's a wonderful people that have been doing such a great job here. Go out on a sour note if it's perceived that they're doing this for their own, own benefit. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone online? Mr. Parnas, you're up.
Yes. This is the official document. You're gonna ask the mayor to get from City Park and put it in the record. In ninety-two, when the term limits were originally passed, the two terms, it was introduced by a commissioner by the name of Trachtenberg. His name is, signature's on here. And his name is printed as commissioner. I heard it should come from a swelling of the people. This is a swelling of the people in my district mostly. It said, put it on the ballot. They're not saying whether or not they approve of a third term or not a third term. It says, put it on the ballot, let the people decide. Why is that such a terrible concept? This is America. Voters decide issues. Not commissions. Voters decide policy. Voters decide the term limits. Voters can change their mind and eliminate them altogether. They say, well, the people have spoken. Well, they spoke in twenty-five when they had no term limits. Then they spoke again in ninety-three when they said two consecutive terms. City attorney tells me that doesn't apply anymore. Eight years, you're done. Even if the people wanna keep you. Why is it in Broward County, twenty out of thirty-one cities do not have two term limits? They either have three or unlimited terms. Are we behind the times? Maybe? What am I asking to do? The American dream, what makes us different than any other country in the world? The power of the vote. I think that this is an issue important enough to let the voters decide. Will I benefit? I don't know. Why don't I know? People get tired of people after so many terms. Very often, they vote them out. We got two people sitting right now that lost or beat incumbents. I beat an incumbent. He couldn't get arrested his second term. Ben Preston lost to an incumbent, then he beat an incumbent. No advantage there. There's no guarantee that somebody would run for a third term, if this, even if it's voted in. And I'm not discussing whether it should be voted in or should not be voted in. What I'm saying here is that don't give up your right to vote. What's next? We just had a governor here in this state had the court throw out his voter repression clause. Federal judge threw it out. Said it's discriminatory. To me, this is voter suppression. This is every excuse why the voters shouldn't get this to vote. It has nothing to do with me or anybody else on this stage. What it has to do with is giving you, the voter, this city of over eighty thousand people, a chance to voice what it feels is right. And we could sit here and we can have people say, I don't think it's a good idea. We can spend thirty-four thousand. Okay, let's stop giving the city all charities. We'll hire an extra guy for Little League to mow the lawn. We'll hire another mechanic to fix trucks. Never mind, the charities are on their own because it doesn't affect the city. We could use that money better. We can always find an excuse not to spend some money. To me, the most important people in this city are the voters. They make this city run. They make this country run. They elect people. And they say, well, the president gets two terms. Congress doesn't have that. By the way, even our state legislators have three terms. The county commission has three terms. We have two. And I'm not saying go to three. I'm saying let the voters decide whether they wanna keep it two or make it three. The voters. That's all this issue is. Should the voters decide? If you don't believe in voting, fine. You wanna communist country or dictatorship, fine. Forget about voting on anything. Why bother even coming to a commission meeting? Your vote don't count. Your opinion don't count. But it does. It's what makes America. And that's what I'm for. All the way of life.
I'm gonna make this real clear. Unless you have Tourette's, please keep your comments to yourself while someone else is speaking. It's rude. If you have a medical condition, you might get a pass. But to continue to do this, it's just plain rude. Please don't do it.
Thank you. So I'm not asking to approve this or not approve it. I'm only asking that it goes on the ballot and let the voters approve it or disapprove it. Why is that such a terrible thing to continue our American way of life? Of voting. Eighty thousand plus people in there. Many of them are registered to vote. I incidentally instituted a voter registration drive in my district. And by the way, District Two. Alice Chapman's name was brought up. She's operating a voter registration drive that is nonpartisan. Mine is too. People come and we check on their status, because many people have been removed from the voter rolls. New people coming in, we give them the application, help them fill it out, where they mail it and they get registered to vote. Because I believe in voting. I believe in the people of this country. So what am I asking? Put it on the ballot, let the people decide. This is too important to just say, well, he's looking for a third term. I'm eighty-six. I don't know if I'm gonna be alive next year. You think I'm thinking about running until I'm in my nineties? I doubt it. But there are younger people here that have done a great job. And if their voters want them to have a third term, I believe they should be given that opportunity. But we'll never know this unless we put it on the ballot and let the voters decide whether they think third term is a good idea or leave it alone at two. That's all this decision is. Whether or not the voters should decide. And I've heard all kinds of stories. Some of the people in my district, some of them don't know how to read. Really? I got people in my, came from foreign countries and can't read English either. So does that make the, the whole area bad? No, of course not. Think about this. Take away our right to vote, what's next? What's next won't the people get a chance to vote on? It's going down a slippery slope. This is an opportunity, maybe to strike a blow for freedom. That this is a decision and we let the voters make that decision. Because it's their city as much as it is ours. It's your city. And you should have a say in what happens. The way to do that is by putting it on the ballot and letting you vote on it. Because any change in the charter requires a vote. Same way, if we wanna sell, this commission voted not to give a piece of land with an eighty-year lease a short time ago, because in the best interest of the city. We had faith, I'm quoting the mayor now, in the citizens of Deerfield Beach, to vote for the city to be able to sell that land and put a nice commercial business there that would benefit the city more than the three-point-two million we were offered. It was a good business decision and they convinced me that putting it on the ballot and letting the voters decide to sell that land or not was a good idea. And that the city would benefit. Anytime you suppress the vote, the meeting's raw. So I'm asking this commission, put it on a ballot, let the people decide. It's too easy to say, I think it's not important. It is important. It's very important. Because you stop them from voting for this, when's it gonna end? Where will it stop? And as far as a small election, I've never seen a governor's race with senators involved. A very tiny race. It's not the same as voting for commissioners on a separate ballot in March. It's a major election throughout the state. And millions of ballots will be cast. And that's the election that this should be on. Those that are not interested wouldn't vote, no matter what election it was on. Those that are interested in the city and care about it will vote. Think about that before you vote. Good night, gentlemen.
Mr. Preston?
All of us have sat here from time to time and we have witnessed different issues that people are impassioned about. And they would show, as they did tonight. And that gives us kind of a glimpse into how people of Deerfield Beach feel about a particular situation. Or about something that we're going to vote on. And whenever, anytime you would see a packed house like we had tonight, I mean, really, one of the people saying more than anything else, yes or no, it's really more, will you hear me? Will you hear my voice? Will you hear my opinion? Will you think about how I feel about this situation? They merely want us to take into consideration people that we represent, in fact, how they feel. I have not seen a grassroots movement of people coming from District One, District Two, Three or Four and say, listen, we don't like the way that it is right now. And we would like you to be able to vote and put this on the ballot. I haven't seen that type of movement. Tonight, when the mayor opened it up to the public, the mayor, you said, I'll be interested to see how you feel about it. Well, let me tell you, nineteen people spoke. And of the nineteen, only six was for extending the term. Thirteen was against. So what does that tell us? That gives us a reflection. That gives us a reflection of how the people feel. The gentleman was saying that, you know, the public can be somewhat suspicious of a politician that, you know, looks to stay in office. I don't know if that can be a fair assessment. But it can be that people can be a little bit skeptical about a person staying in office. But it's what we're all comfortable with, the standard. What are we comfortable with? I think by and large, people said tonight, out of the nineteen people who chose to come to this meeting, people that could have done something else, people that came and shared their opinion, the American way. And this is a situation where the vote is not being expressed, it's actually being welcomed. What's your opinion? How do you feel about something? Because it does matter what you feel. We've heard from previous elected officials. And we got their feel on this thing. And again, nineteen people chose to stand up and come to that podium. Actually, two were online. But nineteen people chose to, so to speak, on this issue. Nineteen. Six of them said we should extend the term. Thirteen said, I'm against it. And either way, it's a good thing that the people had a chance to exactly express their feeling. That is the American way, and that's what makes us different. We have found out in the past few years, in so many issues politically, that we always don't agree. But what makes us great is this country allows tolerance. It allows people to say something that may, maybe not popular. It allows that maybe a name that is not common, that you are in fact an American, because you embrace so, the American concept, the idea embraces so much. This is an example of why we are different. This is an example of why we all should be proud. But I just say that it's important to also recognize results when it comes to us. Nineteen people spoke. Nineteen, and I applaud them. I applaud those people. So, thank you, Mayor.
So this has been a fun debate tonight. They showed state office stuff. So if I were to vote according to my next political move, out of self-interest, I would be voting against the proposal tonight, because I don't want a third term in this commission. But it's a very interesting dynamic when you go out there into the public, because you'll quickly find out that the noes, people against this, are very strong no. And those that are in favor are not, not as vocal. It reminds me of when I was president of my homeowners association, that people would only come to the meetings when they had some complaint or a grievance. They would never come to a meeting when they're in favor of something. They always come when they're against. So it's extremely hard to gauge that yes vote, or that maybe vote, or that vote, like, I want to know more and decide on my own in November vote. It's really hard to gauge that vote, because that vote is more quiet and are not as vocal as the no vote. So that's why I asked for this second reading to be postponed until early April, to give me the opportunity to go out into my district and to talk to my voters, host a town hall meeting, and to see what District Four had to say. And this is what I found out. So after the last commission meeting where we voted four to one to pass, to move this to second reading, coincidentally, I'd already been on the agenda, not knowing this was gonna happen. I went to two homeowners associations the following night, the Wednesday night right after a Tuesday commission meeting. And I was completely shocked at the the response that I received, because I thought for sure that there was no way that this was gonna get any traction in the public. And the homeowners meeting that I went to first, there was roughly forty people in attendance. Second meeting, there was thirteen in attendance, I counted. And of the two meetings, one person spoke against the proposal before us tonight. I was completely floored. Since that time, only within the last couple of days have I started receiving emails against. Prior to that time, I'd only received one email, one email, one phone call. And that person was against it from District Four. Then I went to a very large association in District Four, and the tide turned a little. I would say it was probably sixty, forty against this proposal. And then I had my town hall meeting, and I would say it was probably sixty, forty against this proposal as well. And this is how I conducted my town hall meeting. I went in, and I did not take a position one way or the other. I gave the pros to the proposal, I gave the cons to the proposal. And I said, you are my residents, I'm your representative, I want to know the information, how to vote for you. And they spoke out and they came up with all of the, all of the pros and cons that we discussed tonight, and then some. Everything that everyone here said tonight, so we don't need to go through that again. And I listened to everybody. But the, but being at the head of the room was very interesting, because you're able to see everybody's reaction, like tonight, you can only see the person that's speaking, but I can see everybody at once. And so those that were in favor was a more tepid response, because there was actually a gentleman that spoke, that spoke. And then there started to be some applause for that, but then the people were like, well, maybe that's not the, you know, what I should be doing in this meeting, so they were more quiet. So I noticed tonight even, there were people that were speaking, and there were others that were nodding their heads, shaking yes and no. So the nineteen people that spoke, spoke, isn't truly representative of the crowd tonight. Because there were people that spoke that did not speak, that had an opinion that I could see shaking heads. And that goes for both sides, by the way. There were people that were, that are in favor of this proposal did not speak. And there are people that were against this proposal that likewise did not speak. So how much is that, six against, thirteen for change? I don't know. I really don't know. But I do know that it was a lot closer call than I originally thought. If this gets on the ballot, me personally, Todd Rosky, is voting no. But I don't know that I can make that decision in my representative capacity for my residents, given everything that I've been to and all the meetings that I've attended. I think it's a lot closer call than people think. I, I, I just don't know what the public would do. I know what I personally would do. There is some precedent for this out there. It's not like Deerfield is going alone on this. Your county commissioner is entitled to three, four-year terms. So that puts us a little bit of a disadvantage when it comes to the county, when we're fighting them on issues, because they get to stay in office and we have to go. But other sister cities we have in, in Broward County, roughly, excuse me, roughly a third are like Deerfield Beach. They have two four-year terms. The other third have three four-year terms. And the remaining third have no term limits at all. So maybe it is time for a reevaluation, for someone, a new generation, to look at the issue and vote on it. It's really, really hard to tell, sitting here. I mean, because everybody's so impassioned, and I thank everybody for their opinion, and everybody made great comments, not only tonight, but in my town hall meeting and the emails that I've received. Everybody has great points to make. And I talked to people even today, by the way. Everybody has really good, good points to make, but are we missing something by not letting this go to the ballot and let the voters decide? I mean, what is the harm in that? If it's a no vote, if the thirteen people that spoke against are right, then it goes, then it goes down and it settles once and it's once and for all. If it's closer than I think, and there's maybe some support for it, then maybe we'll all be surprised later in November. It's really, really hard to tell. But I don't think me in my representative capacity can say with all the meetings that I've been to that there's a big push against or for this. Now Commissioner Preston, you said there were, we had roughly, I went to your, your district meeting as well. And we had roughly the same number of people at our meetings. I had roughly thirty people, you had roughly thirty people. And, and I started my meeting by saying, just giving the pros and the cons to each side. And, and I didn't voice my personal opinion until tonight. I never have to anybody. But you started your meeting when you came up to this issue, conveniently by saying that you were against. And I'm not, and that's how you decided to run your meeting, and that's fine. But then maybe that tilted the playing field or the comments that were made by the people that were at your meetings. I, I wish I was a mathematical statistician, so you could kind of determine, you know, how all that plays out, but I'm, I'm not. I can't figure that out. So I don't know, you conducting your meeting led to a particular result versus the way I conducted my meeting, leading to a particular result, versus the HOA meetings that I led to, leading to a particular result, versus the people that spoke tonight leading to a particular result. I don't think you can draw a mass conclusion from any one of those singular events as to what the public was going to do or is going to do potentially in November if we approve this. I, I think it's closer than we, than we think. I think there's enough debate out there that that is worth putting on the ballot. I'm not going to join that debate. If I vote tonight in the affirmative, which I, which I am, I'm not going to join that debate. If people want to ask me an opinion, I will, I will tell you, but I'm not going to go out and campaign for this. I'm not going to hold a rally for this. I'm not going to do any of that, because I'm gonna let the voters, I'm gonna let you decide what you think you want to do going in, in the future. And not some politician telling me. But this politician has heard from his district, which I wanted from the last month. I went out and I listened, which is my job to do, and what I heard is different from my personal opinion. And so I think that's the way I need to vote tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner R. S. and Commissioner Preston.
Okay, Ben, you made a statement. Nineteen people spoke and thirteen people spoke against. Here is three hundred and sixty-six out of three hundred and sixty-eight people that said, put it on the ballot. And they signed their name to it. Only two noes had a three hundred and sixty-six signatures. Those are numbers. Nineteen people speaking at the meeting counts, but so is this. See the number? Three hundred and sixty-six. They all signed it to put it on the ballot. And that's what I'm asking for. Put it on the ballot, let the voters decide. It's an important issue for this city to include the voters in making this change like most of the other cities in Broward County. Twenty out of thirty-one have three or free term limits or no term limits. They can run forever. I'm not asking for that. I'm just saying, let the voters decide. Let's get into the twenty-first century. Things have changed since nineteen ninety-two, when this was first brought out. We've grown a little bit. We have a different demographic. With that, I'll put a motion on the floor to approve. Okay, I'll wait.
Uh, Commissioner Preston.
Yes. Commissioner Rosky, you said that that I began my meeting with telling the people how I felt and I did. I think it's important for the constituency that I serve, anybody serves, whether you're running for commissioner or president, it is important that people know how you feel about a particular issue. You don't need to dance around it. You tell them how you feel, but you're not telling them, you know, and what you're not saying is I said, you have your own opinion, and I, and I solicited that opinion, which is the, the very thing, but there's nothing wrong with me telling the people how I feel. You did it one way, and, and, and I did it a different way. Second, you said that the nineteen people that spoke, and I said that thirteen was against, six was for, you said, I don't even, I don't know what that means, I don't know what that says. But let me tell you what it says. It says this. It says that if a thousand people came out of, let's say, twenty thousand and voted for a particular position, you can say, well, only a thousand people voted. What does that really mean? It means that those thousand people wanted that person to be in that position. So, you know, notoriously, we have low turnout for municipal elections, low turnout. Does that really reflect the majority of the people? But it does reflect the people that decided to come out and vote, in the rain or whatever. So it does say something. It says, at least the people that came tonight, it says nineteen, out of the nineteen that spoke, thirteen of them was against, and six was for. So it does say something.
Thank you. Um, a couple things, not to belabor this too much. Yeah, it's not something crazy to, to have an ask, because two-thirds of Broward County have either free term limits or no term limits. So it's not like this is something completely radical. Someone brought up the fact that former mayor tried to have us go to a referendum to change our dates of election. That was less than eight years after having a committee come forward for changes to our charter, in which that mayor chaired and said, do not change from March to November. And the people voted, or they didn't even put it to ballot, because that committee, which she chaired, made the recommendation to the commission not to change it. And yet, eight years later, she wanted to switch it when she got into office. At a time when we did not have a fiscal situation like we have now, which is much better. You know, I, I look at who was here tonight, who spoke, I look at who was here the first place as well. I count those votes as well. I count the people that I've seen talk to. And definitely people are, have strong opinions. And it surprises me. It does surprise me, this is why I thought, I thought this is, you know, we're not gonna have a second meeting on this. Petitions, I have a problem with. And it's weird, your two elected officials say that they got elected for a third term, as they did a petition. And that didn't get ignored, and we're gonna ignore his petition. But the flip side of that is, let's run another petition out there saying, do you not want to do this? There, we don't know how many people did it, so. We did have somebody come up here and say that they ran for office, and they didn't win, but they polled the people who voted for him, and they said, no, not to do it. Well, if you lost, you're not exactly in the majority right there. So that doesn't help the argument, but your point's taken, is that you've talked to a lot of people that don't agree with this. To me, the bottom line is, do we want to spend thirty-four thousand dollars? It's a thirty-four thousand dollar question. It's all it says. Let the people decide. But it's gonna cost you thirty-four thousand to let the people decide. And if I walk in here tonight, I was completely blown away, and we have packed this house a lot bigger for far less controversial items. I'm blown away about the lack of people not being up in arms. I agree with you. I don't see a lot of people banging on the doors, coming in here and saying, hey, you have extra terms. But I don't see a lot of people in here going nuts, saying, how can we do this? I see a few people out there that I know what their agenda is. They don't want it, because they might not like some of the people sitting up here. That's fine. Their vote still counts. But what's interesting is that, you know, it's thirty-four thousand dollars. Otherwise, if it was free, we'd put it to the people. That would be a problem, right? We wouldn't care. So with all the things we spent money on, and all the things that happened, there can be, so, well, you got water rates, water rates are enterprise fund, you can't take that money to go here and, it doesn't work. So it's not an apples-to-horrend comparison. You can't really make that. But there are plenty of things at thirty-four thousand dollars to be used in the city. We have a budget, though, over two hundred million dollars in the city. So is it worth thirty-four thousand dollars to let the people decide? That's where the question is. I think, I have a hard time looking at people that say, hey, I want you to do this, to say, I'm sorry, I'm, you know, I'm not using your taxpayer dollars to give you the right to vote. I also have a hard time looking at people today, hey, I don't want this, and I get to spend your, your taxpayer dollars to find out if other people agree. It's tough. It's a tough decision. And yes, everything we vote on up here, there's a lot that can be built on, that can be applied, that is an indirect benefit to us. It is the curse of sitting up here and making decisions that affect all of us. You want to lower the water rate, you want to lower the, oh, well, you got a peach print, and you want it this down, I guess what it affects you. That happens. And that happens all the time. And, and people are gonna say what they want to say. In the end, I really want to know what the people think about this, because I'm surprised it's even this close. It should be. I expected it not to be. It's a lot closer than I thought. So it's the thirty-four thousand dollar question. That's really all it is, because I think every single one of us would agree without that, because we go to the voters and let them decide. I can tell you this, after sixteen years, I still got three years left. That's a long time to sit up. People sat up here longer. And they probably should. And I don't, I agree internally, they need to be there. But sixteen years ago was when this decision, I'm not looking at what Bernie's bringing up as far as the nineteen-three years ever that they did here. sixteen years ago was when this decision, I'm not looking at what burns bring out as far as the nineteen-three years ever that they get here to. Two thousand and six is when they vote. That's a long time ago. Things have changed. So, I don't know. Are we willing to spend thirty-four thousand dollars to let the people decide? We have a motion from you.
I have a second.
I have a second motion. You have a motion from Commissioner Parnas, second by Commissioner Drosky. Give a call.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
No.
Let's not do that.
No.
Mary Dance?
Yes.
You're now at the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. Person's addressing the commission. She'll state his or her name and address in a speech for three minutes unless it's set up or wanted to show them by the mayor. Uh, as a reminder, this is the time for public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Uh, if you have a comment on items that are on the agenda, the time to do that is, uh, when public comment period is open for that agenda item. No comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person and no language which would offend persons' ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted.
Uh, Katie Fryt, I think you have your hand up. Would you go first?
Katie Fryt, I'm from eighteen Southeast Second Street. Um, I want to, uh, uh, hold on one second. Um, say thank you to, uh, Commissioner Preston for, um, making note of our seed project that Kiwanis did. It is a great project, um, that we did and, and partnering with BSO. Um, I'd like to see the city do more projects like this. And in addition to that, I would like the constituents to know, the res- residents know, if they have a project, something like this that helps the kids, it helps the community, if they could bring it to Kiwanis or to Rotary or to the Women's Club, we have volunteers that are ready and able to assist and help. And if they give us some ideas on other projects that they would like to, yes, commit, uh, complete in the community, that would be fabulous. Um, secondly, um, the Department is hosting these meetings, requesting input from residents on what they want in their parks. Again, maybe it's time when we ask them for a skate park and we ask them for a, uh, motorbike park so that the kids can ride safely and not on, um, other people's property. Uh, lastly, or second, uh, the Italian dinner, um, we're having an Italian dinner at the Women's Club on April twentieth at six-thirty. It is a fundraiser for us, um, as well as a few other items. There's gonna be some great surprises. The cost is twenty-five dollars per person. We'd like to see as many people there as possible. Please contact me if you would like a ticket. And last but not least, maybe we want to put a note on Facebook to let everybody know that Elon Musk did not buy the Deerfield Beach Pier twenty-five million dollars. It was the best April Fools joke that somebody put out there. And I can tell you how many people I have contacted me about that to ask that, that is really the, truly the. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Tom Chisler, fifty-nine, Garden East, eleven, five, South Beach. A couple of weeks ago, I addressed the commission, talking about issues with, uh, new construction in existing neighborhoods. At that time, I talked about parking issues, talked about runoff, um, from higher elevations, I talked about noise. I didn't make just a couple of minutes right now to go into a little bit more detail about noise. You also mentioned, like, mission during that, um, meeting a couple of weeks ago, I did mention where, uh, I thought that the city staff had not been enforcing some of the city codes and they were approving building permits. And I realized that I didn't bring any examples. And I wanted to bring in examples onward tonight. I actually have hand notes if I'm allowed to.
Sure. If you, if you want to do it at the end, that's all right. That would, this is a mess of your time. Oh, you have to do it right now. Okay, you're done.
I could take you, I could take you through them, which might be.
Oh, okay. Okay, sure. Go right ahead. We pause the timer for a moment. Thank you. It's a bigger button.
I did highlight the important pages. So what I specifically want to talk about is the handful of equipment associated with some of the very, very large reconstruction in residential neighborhoods. Uh, the first page here, I wanted to bring, raise attention, the current city rules around noise in residential areas during the daytime. There's a sixty-day limit that now it's five. If you take a look at the second and third pages, it's a small handout and, um, there again, they're actually tabbed on your deck. It's the actual application. And I did, uh, redact the house that it's on, so there's some public information. But you can see in there, there's an application for three air conditioning units, two on one page and a third air conditioning unit on another page. And then from the application are the actual specifications for that air conditioning, those air conditioning units. And this noise, uh, from those air conditioning units will be greater than the Deerfield Beach noise ordinance. I'm wondering how the world and city staff and city departments approve these applications. When by specification of the product, it's gonna be installed, um, they're gonna be over the noise origins and they're not requiring pre-mitigation whatsoever. And when you take a look at the way noise works, the highest unit there has DVA of seventy-six. You've got three of them. And the way the math works is you have to get DVA to the seven and six during the over DVA. So this is the answer to the next to the house, um, clearly above the city noise ordinance. So I'm just asking, then, the city department section enforced noise ordinance from the operating limits rather than requiring a resident to file a code complaint after that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Yes.
Good evening, Commissioner, uh, Mayor, Commissioner. You pull a twenty-eight, sixty-one, or, 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 try. Uh, come before you this evening, uh, we're up here in Deerfield, youth school in Deerfield, East Park, with, with, unfortunately, some issues that I wanted to bring before you all to, to answer on some questions. As you all previously employed, you're for Deerfield Beach. One item that was passed by the Wyndham Motel to, uh, utilize, uh, provide for their guests free of charge of each amenity umbrellas and chairs. Um, however, the last week and a half, uh, week to week and a half since they started, uh, they've been setting up some of their equipment on the city's property. Um, when I was employed with the city, I had the, uh, task of managing the contracts of the beach concession mirror. Um, and I was tasked to make sure video was set up on the city's property. Uh, the question is, who's making sure the hotel's not setting up on the city's property? Um, Sunday, they had a wedding. They quartered off their property as they usually do for a wedding. And they set their setups up on the city's property. Um, earlier this morning, I was out there, uh, just forgive, was I asked one of the employees, I say, hey, which is it to sit in the chair? Uh, his response was, are you a, um, a guest of the hotel? I said, no. He said, well, you have to see the, uh, other, uh, chair room service. So, okay, I say, well, what's the difference? He said, well, our guests, um, they can sit in the chairs for free for now. And then there's gonna be a charge starting next month. I said, well, I thought it was supposed to be free because they were charging the resort fee already. Uh, but from what he's saying, it's supposed to be a twenty-five dollar charge starting next month. So is that something somebody can look at from the city? Because it was said there were gonna be free amenities to their guests that were staying at the hotel. Uh, the other issue I want to bring before is something I recorded a while back, uh, down on the other end of the beach. Uh, the property address, I believe, is nine forty-eight, uh, Southeast Twenty-first Avenue, front of the Suites. Uh, the previous contractor, Bougie Brothers, still operating on city property. Uh, they're not contracted with the city and they are making revenue on city property. Um, they've been doing this for a while, reported. Still, nothing has been done. Uh, so just want to know, when will they, uh, get a cease and desist and the city's gonna go after them of operating illegally on city property? Um, that's all I have for the evening. Uh, I'll be reaching out to some of you, Commissioner, uh, Drosky. Still haven't forgotten, give you a call, uh, on some further issues.
Thank you. I'll see, anyone else in the public? Commissioner? Next item?
Okay, the next item is consent. It's for appointment. There's one, so it's okay. Commissioner, I'll just read it to the record. Um, item number nine, a resolution to City Commission, the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, appointing Dennis J. Bonner, Jr. as an alternate member to the Deerfield Beach Marine Advisory Board to fulfill an inspired term and providing for an effective date.
Commissioner, any comments on this? Do you have some public area comments on that? I'll see, we close it to the public? Okay, go approve. Second, motion, the second. All of they just say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that's. Okay, now I can. Ten, fifteen, we can do our consent.
If that's the commission's pleasure, sure.
Is there anyone that likes to speak on either item ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen? Raise your hand. Are there any polls from the commission? Okay. Can we do this all as a group?
Yes, you can, Mayor.
Pro public. Are we closing? We just checked out one. I'm, I'm closing the public. Okay, commissions, your motion to do it all at once.
Motion to approve?
Thank you. Your motion, Commissioner Parnas, second by Commissioner Preston. Give a call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
I can add that?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is resolution to City Commission, the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving and deet to Habitat for Humanity Briar Inc. for the lot located at four sixty-four North Deerfield Avenue, providing for an effective date.
Is there anyone from the public who, like, commented on item number sixteen? Not seeing any number closing to the public? Motion to approve?
Second.
That's something you, you have motion, Commissioner Preston, second by Vice President, that all favors say, oh, actually, we will call him, sorry.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
I can add that?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number seventeen is a resolution to City Commission, the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving agreement with FG Construction LLC for the Southeast Thirteenth Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation and Repair Project in amount not to exceed seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, utilizing the terms of Broward County Contract PNC two-one-two-zero-eight-eight-five-B-one, providing for execution and an effective date.
Do you have any public area comment on the side? Not seeing any closing to the public? Commissioner?
Second.
Motion by Vice President, that's second by Commissioner Parnas. Uh, we'll call for this.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
I can add that?
Yes.
And Mary Dance?
Yes.
Item number eighteen is in accordance with the City Commission, the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending section seventy dash seventy-two imposed and section seventy dash one twenty-seven imposed, chapter seventy utilities of the city code ordinances to provide for water and wastewater utility rates to be adopted by resolution, providing for codification, severability, conflicts, and effective date. This is first reading.
Do you have any public area comment on the side? I'll see, you, Priscilla, I'm, so you're ready for a presentation?
We did have a presentation.
Sure.
If I could go ahead and, um, and start us off, Mayor. Uh, this, this item before you is, is the ordinance, um, to provide for a resolution that will be on second, resolution on second reading, which will happen on April nineteenth, is the actual items uh, that would, um, amend the, uh, current rate structure of utility fee. Tonight, we have our consultants here to give a presentation on the methodology behind utility master plan and that rate, uh, sufficiency analysis.
Hi, good evening. Commissioner Gallo, Director for Environmental Services. I don't want to take too much time tonight, so I am going to just turn it over to the city consultant to go through the presentation. Um, I will say that we've had a couple of public workshops in the past month, um, as well as having met individually with commissioners. Uh, tonight, we wanted to get consensus from the DIAS concerning, uh, our utility master plan moving forward. Uh, so thank you so much for your consideration. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, and Commissioner. Uh, my name is Chuck Sinclair. I'm City Vice President, the role of engineers. Had the opportunity to work out and so we're here to the staff and developing the master plan and, uh, working with our consultant, Matt Tullis. So, I'll, we have a lot of information, but I'll go through it quickly, highlights. Um, this is an overview of our, uh, our, our presentation tonight. Uh, we're gonna talk about utility systems, goals that we had in the master plan, the condition assessment we did of the system recommendations that we made for, 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 for states. We did this work on resilience and sustainability that worked pretty, uh, we developed a recommendation for capital improvement program. Uh, Brad Tullis did a specific efficiency rate analysis. So there's a lot of moving parts for the presentation, so, uh, I'll work with whoever's developing the others. Uh, so first, an overview of the utility system. Uh, this is an interesting fact that probably a lot of your residents and customers don't, don't really understand. Uh, the yellow shaded area is actually the jurisdictional limits of the city, of the city of Deerfield Beach. And the blue outline is actually the utility service area, uh, that the city's utility serves. So you can see there that it's, uh, about, uh, the time that we did this study, uh, starting in, in, just under eight thousand residents. Uh, fifty-seven thousand of your residents were actually served by your city utility. So, um, almost thirty percent of your residents are actually served water and wastewater from Broward County. Thanks. Oh, and there you go. So, uh, the most recent census, I think someone said earlier tonight, it's, oh, eight, that's seven thousand residents. So it has, uh, continued to grow since. Uh, you're saying water treatment distribution system, you have two raw water supply wells. So these are the groundwater wells that pull raw water out of the ground with heat through water treatment plant, uh, from there, uh, clean drinking water is called through over two hundred miles of water mains for the twenty-two inches and six water storage tanks help equalize the pressure throughout water. Water treatment plants in combination, three parallel treatment process streams, total of twenty-one million gallons, uh, capacity a day. There's actually, for those three treatment systems, they're all individual, they're, they're running parallels. There's a lot of, so, this is your whole system built in nineteen eighty-four as seven and a half million gallons a day capacity. A nano filtration built in two thousand and three is ten and a half G and, uh, so what's this reverse auto system? Those three, again, those three systems are rated parallel. The wastewater system overview, you have a hundred and fifty miles of grabbing. So these are the lines that go over homes and businesses of, uh, other users around the city in your service area. And they, uh, uh, go to the home, home stations because the water's in pump, thirty-seven mile force train. And you actually don't treat your own wastewater. You actually have a contract with Broward County. So there's a, a big rest station, a master pump station. It involves all of your wastewater to the Broward County North region and water, wastewater. And of course, there's a utility supervisory control data acquisition system with rearverted skater, which really is the, the master mind behind your system. That's what helps your operators control and operate all different components of your water, those water systems, both plant and out, uh, outside the tent, so to speak, with your So background of master plan study, um, the scope for the master plan, we, uh, the master plan itself, we evaluated existing conditions and performance of the utility and we looked at, um, the system and facility needs to meet future demand. We developed a recommended list of capital improvement, uh, projects, or CIP. Then based on that, we, uh, we, Brad Tullis, we all did a revenue specificity analysis where they developed financial forecasts of what would be big fun water and wastewater system for the year twenty forty. They evaluated the revenue available to fund and operate the system and, and, and the needed capital improvement costs. And recommended plans, fund the operating costs and recommend a rate increase if necessary. and recommended plans on the operating cost and recommend a rate increase if necessary. So here's a timeline of the master plan. We actually started back in twenty eighteen. We kicked off the master plan study. We submitted a draft master plan late twenty nineteen to the city review. Then the Rattellston developed the revenue sufficiency analysis, created that the second week of March of twenty twenty, and I remember it pretty clearly because the next week, obviously, pandemic broke out. And, and that, and that being, per remarks, we actually recommended a rate increase to begin this year twenty twenty-one. Of course, there were a lot more important things the city had to deal with, starting around that time, so we really put everything on the shelf. And then back late last year, we recruited the staff and formed a plan to have forward, and then over the last several months, we've been working with the stakeholder groups and had public workshops and solvents earlier to update the public. Well, the takeaway is, you can advance the next slide. The takeaway there is this has been an overall process that really for the last two years has kind of been put on the shelf, and now we're back here tonight. So based on four components of the master plan study, again, we evaluated the performance and condition of the system, what your capacity needed to accommodate future probe, recommend projects, and then the other opportunities that I'll, I'll speak on briefly on resilience. So condition assessment, and I'll highlight here, this was observed when we were out in the field looking at your system in twenty nineteen. So that was three years ago. So the condition of your wall overall are some possible supply of wealth, we want to highlight good news, features, positive system for your wealth builds. There's sufficient capacity, kind of permitted allocation, it's quite a simple explanation, so that's good. You don't need to expand your wealth. But your eastern wealth field is near the end of its useful life. It's older, the original wealth field, dating back when you had east power grid plan. It will require some energy availability, you want to keep that available. Your western wealth fields, freshwater wealth builds that supply your nano operation, and I'm talking, in good shape, due to continue to rehab. And the vastest wealth field for the wealth that feed your nano operation plant, there again, are, have some issues with sand production. Or recommends some further evaluation. For your water treatment plant. Next slide. The lime softening system was operating effectively, but it, it was in pretty bad shape. It's, it's operating beyond its useful life. And there's the harms of that really would require some good configuration to continue to be identified. I will say emergency, just real short-term things. Your lime softening. Your nano filtration, your reverse auto system is both in good condition and really recommended only requirements. So needed all the regular maintenance, rehabilitation. And here's just some examples. I mean, our, our water process engineer who evaluates just, quote, a master plan, significant rehabilitation would be required in the future to maintain the treatment and operation, so that really was the major requirement for your water plant that we recommended that is. The water storage pumping and distribution, good news. Again, their water distribution system needs requirements for storage and pressure criteria, so you really weren't having water quality or pressure issues throughout your distribution system, so that's good news. But much of the piping is near the end of its useful life, particularly the piping system, eastern part of the city, older part of the city. A lot of that pipe is old and integrated, and, and actually, there are rigorous requirements for both the water and our proper wastewater system that actually require a mandate. So that might, and are mildly determined that about twenty percent of your systems at risk are exceeding water quality age criteria, so water connection could hold. Could lead to degradation, water quality, water taste. For your wastewater collection, the maintenance could be, the system does not experience overflows. That's good because a lot of your system community struggle with that. Well documented in the media, last several years, in some of the coastal areas along Southeast Florida. It really challenged, been challenged with having overflows in your system, but if you don't have that issue, you're, you're fortunate. You do have adequate capacity in your system, pledge and system to get you long-term. And fifty percent of your pump stations have actually been installed or replaced over the last ten years. Challenges is that the rest, the other fifty percent of those stations will need to be improved and rehabilitated, and much of useful might be considered. And I think last of the skater system, good news, your systems are working effectively. But platforms are pretty old, technology, pretty labor-intensive to operate, so we brought a lot of engine for the operator, everything moving. You actually had two separate platforms, one for your water system, one for your wastewater system, so that creates challenges, particularly just chicken operation and training staff. So we're going to talk about capacity needed to meet future demand, and we'll talk a little more about this later, but this was worked again, we projected back in twenty nineteen. We put your population growth projections for the twenty-five-year horizon. When we assume the load of moderate growth, so it's three lines on the graph there, are low, moderate, and high-growth scenarios. We, we predicted that it looked like the low, moderate growth was what you're going to probably see in, in the city. We did system modeling to simulate future demand flows and the performance to accommodate capacity. And the next slide shows actually, we checked, and for drinking water would be in wastewater. So, you know, it looks funny on the left side of both of those, but those are all historical, so we have about three or four years' historical data, and then kind of normalize graphs. You can see the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, we're checking some moderate growth, and then it kind of flattened out over time, and so you would be in top work. Playing books, expected that they were going to flatten out. So recommended projects to address future capacity and performance needs. Again, I have to keep highlighting, this is what we came up with. So just going to go through again, the components of the system and what we were recommending back then. First, for your raw, raw water supply, that the well suction issues that I mentioned earlier, were producing sand for both your RO and nano plants, needed to address that. And also implement just in general, more rigorous of our interest term that is your normal replacement, R and R, extend a life system. Basically, just have a ongoing process of just keeping up with your, your equipment materials, we have to replace it as it needs, so it doesn't extend. We can actually extend it to. Your water treatment plant, short-term improvements, there were a number of key process components that were in, near the end of the supply to move the lime softening system, some of your pumping systems. And we recommended some short-term repair and rehabilitation to really just maintain the service and reliability of those systems. And the long-term improvements. And whoever's doing this is doing a great job. Great, great job. Long-term improvements, the commission deteriorated lime softening, replace it with a state-of-the-art, high exchange system. That's a big ticket item. Your lime softening system, it works, but it is, it's in bad shape. And we, we, we recognize that a new line exchange system, when you combine with your existing nano filtration and RO systems, really will provide an excellent barrier for some of the contaminants emerging, so I think people are starting to hear about pharmaceuticals and CEC contaminants emerging, or PFAS. Some of these, some of these chemicals and contaminants that are, that we're finding in our system now, and lime softening doesn't, doesn't improve those. So ion exchange system, which is a very costly factor system, which is being used throughout Florida, people in South Florida in combination of the systems, was the, the system that we worked with your staff and identified that really met your water treatment goals, reliability and operation goals for a long time. And also be telling regulatory requirements. For the water distribution and storage and distribution system, I'm an ongoing R and R program. Store the facilities, and then replace that eight-five. Again, much of that's going to be the part of that. For your wastewater collection. Again, I'm going R and R to maintain the remaining fifty percent of your, your lift station, pump station, and then replace a lot of eight-five. For your skater system, unify your two systems on the one platform, really solid network infrastructure, and then also really important to update your physical and cybersecurity plan and update vulnerability assessments. It's not only good practice, but it's actually federal mandates that are requiring a water wastewater utilities to look cyber and physical security. Other opportunities related to sustainability and resilience of your clean water, we thought this would really aid that the staff had foresight to say, let's look at, you know, not just the, not some old physical vision, but was also a bit sustainability and reliability of our system. So we did evaluate your existing assets for resiliency to things like on the G, vulnerability during extreme weather events, and recommended some adaptations that mitigate potential risk. Example would be, as you are rehabbing your pump stations or repairing pump stations, let's set the elevations of those pump stations at a higher level so that they see the impact of climate change, and see that, that, you know, flood elevations coming, that we can all put the rigors, the right, the right locations that will be impacted by that. We also value reclaiming water opportunities, including the opportunities to construct and operate a reclaim water system. It does a couple of things for you. It offsets the recent break in water that you're using, that your customers use for irrigation, and it all provides opportunities for certain special industrial uses, and that, of course, will offset cost and demand on your drinking water. So recommended capital improvement, again, these are what we recommended in twenty nineteen, and there's some good news here. The recommended capital improvement program includes CIPs for the five and twenty-year horizon, so we look to fund our R and R program for each and every component of this utility. We estimated cost, and then we laid out and projected here, that our range of years of those would be. Then that CIP really serves as a basis for revenue rates efficiency study to. So the purpose of this slide is not for you to be able to read anything on the table, but we did come up with a very complex, it's relatively simple, but a very detailed table that basically said here, all the line items of the CIP, here's how much we estimate the cost, and here over the next twenty to twenty-five years, what we think we're going to implement that, and what the cash flow would be during that. So what's happened since twenty nineteen? All that I've talked about is really what we did up to twenty nineteen and presented in March of twenty twenty. So the good news is utility operations have continued uninterrupted during the pandemic. All your water treatment delivery system were fully operational, delivered water that was safe for your customers, applying all the drinking water standards, didn't have any overflows of wastewater system. Your city's water plant was actually recognized in twenty nineteen. It's the most improved water treatment plant in its class by the American Water Works Association. And also good news is the water cutoffs discontinued during the pandemic accounted for almost three quarters of our dollars in liabilities. And ongoing capital improvements in R and R projects were continuing to occur, but they were funded from existing operations that actually had to be cash reserves. Needed replacement R and R capital. So then we sat down with staff to, to update that big complex table that I talked about, and we actually removed projects that they completed. So we were really pleased when we got together with staff in the last year and learned about all the things that they had continued to implement during the pandemic without the rate increase. And I think the next slide has a couple of examples. They refer us to lime softening settling thing, so what you see here might look kind of gross of a water plant, but what's, this is exactly the way it should operate. Get the lime softening, the well there, you can see on the outside there, that's where the clear, the clear water, the lime holes and contaminants out settles. That's the clear water. So you can see this, this, this system is actually be, refers. I'll tell you that it's, 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 looks good. It's cosmetic, it's operating well, but it doesn't take away from the fact that there's a lot of issues in just the terms of how the process is operating. And also upgraded skater system to actually, one of the recommendations was to unify your water wastewater platform on the one, and they actually accomplished that. It can allow the network of creeks required, so really, really impressive with staff, I think, through the last couple of years. And then this is just a highlight of, of an updated five-year CIP that, that we're recommending for twenty twenty-seven. It's just under sixty million dollars in capital improvement and R and R projects. This is an ongoing list. We're still working with staff, and we'll continue to work with them over the coming months to figure out the timing and nature of this, but you can see some of the big items there, including the new line exchange treatment system, which is probably going to run in the neighborhood. And then we, before I turn it over to Henry, I just want to give you kind of set the stage for what your, your rates are and do it in comparison to what your rates are compared to some of the other utilities in here. So this, this slide, right, this is actually a slide that Broward Water and Wastewater Services presented to its, to the county commission late last year. And you can see they highlighted what their current county rate is, and, and I'll work with whoever's controlling this to click, one click. Well, so that's actually what about thirty percent of your customers are actually paying. So that's the rate, thirty percent of your, your residents are paying because they're customers of Broward County. And then the next, next click shows where, it shows where, yeah, the average water store for all of Broward County. So that's what, that's the average of all Broward County utilities are, and that's good news because Broward County itself, Water and Wastewater Services under that, thirty percent of your, of your citizens are, are paying well on the county address, so that's good. The next click, I think it shows that where your rates for your city utility is, and that's where about seventy percent of your, your residents are, are, are served there. And that's a rate that has not been increased for years. So it wasn't always the lowest, but as other utilities have continued to increase their rates over time, yours is to stay the same. That's resulted in having really lowest rate in Broward County. One more quick. This just shows if you had over the last ten years, just increased your rates for inflation, maybe around three percent annually, your rates would still be somewhere there in that area, showing the large arrows points, it'd still be well below the average. So then I'm going to turn it over to Henry to talk about the rate forecast that we did.
Henry Thomas, Vice President, Ralph Talis, Financial Consultants. I'm going to summarize for you as quickly as possible. I know it's kind of a long night. The rate study that we performed and what we're recommending for the upcoming fiscal year. So the goals we started with, looking at a twenty-year financial forecast with respect to the master plan and all the the projects that were identified, was to, the best we could, phase in rate increases to mitigate customer impacts. Because it has been fourteen years at that point, before you had raised rates, you weren't in the soundest financial position within the enterprise fund in terms of cash balances and cash flow available to fund the future rates. We determined that in order to catch up from many years of not raising rates and to be able to fund this program, which is critical, needs are to fund the renewal and replacement of a lot of your aging assets and your treatment systems, that the rate increase would need to be close to about forty percent. Now, we phased that in over a five-year period at seven point one percent a year, and I'll show you that one of the ways we were able to do that when we did these projections at that time, was use reserves that you had set aside in your rate stabilization funds. So even with the phase-in, we weren't fully funding through rates, your current operations. And while we were trying to maintain reserves going forward, over time, we had to use reserves of your term, or the rate increases would have been much higher than what we proposed. So some of the goals we set up was to have a minimum cash balance in the operating and emergency fund of sixty days. Now, you're, you're, you're a little above that right now, or, or were back then, but very close. We'd really like to see a target in those two funds of ninety days. Then you have another fund for your capital reserves, for your renewal and replacement program. And these are maintenance, major maintenance items that you want to continue to do, even in a revenue downturn year, because you don't want to get too far behind on your, on your critical maintenance needs. So there, we, we raised the target to have another thirty days of revenues, included when we look at all, all reserve funds, operating, emergency, as well as capital reserves. So those were the targets we started with. Of course, compliance with your debt, which is pretty straightforward, you're not a high-debt system, and we had to make sure and test that you're in compliance with those covenants from your lenders. Next slide. So the, the, basically, what we're doing is we're balancing the revenues of the system, rate revenues, connection fee revenues, and your other service fees and miscellaneous charges with revenue requirements. The biggest expense is labor as well as your costs you pay for wastewater treatment in Broward County. So that's one of your largest expenses. Obviously, you have outstanding debt, and in this plan over the next twenty years to implement the capital plans identified by Corolla, you will need to do some additional borrowing to again mitigate the rate impacts and spread the. and spread those costs out over the lives of the assets. And finally, you have transfers that you make to the general fund for services in kind, services that are provided by the general fund to the utility. So look at this balance. We looked at a twenty-year forecast to begin with. We evaluated recent trends and looked at your data in depth to see what your beginning position was. We then developed projections of revenues and revenue requirements. We looked at factors like increases in labor costs, increases in insurance, increases in fuel. And at the time, obviously the inflation we were facing was much lower than what we've been going through in the recent few months that we're starting to see. So again, I would say that, you know, when we examined this, the environment was a little different when we did this back in twenty nineteen. But again, if you would go to the next one, please. Over the, over the twenty-year period, we broke your major expenditures down into the components. The bar chart includes operating expenses. It includes the debt service, which is the, the, the orange bar. It includes the transfers to the general fund and then the renewal and replacement fund transfers. So this just indicates that the current rates at that time were not adequate. And again, without future rate increases, if the capital plans were put into place, that you would no longer be able to fund the utilities from the enterprise funds. And in fact, by 2027, you'd barely be funding your current operations, let alone your capital. So next chart, please. We really want, no, I'm sorry, went back. We really wanted to focus on the first five years because when we're looking at rates, obviously projecting out twenty years is a difficult check, a task. And so we focus on a near-term rate plan for the next five years. And again, when we, when we did that, we looked at certain balances in terms of cash. If you go to the next chart, please. Again, demonstrating that we weren't in compliance. I did want to point out also that on Broward County, which again is one of your largest expenses that you incur, that since you increased your rates last in two thousand nine, the components of the Broward County rate to you have gone up. The customer component has gone up thirty-one percent. The transmission component's gone up fifty-two percent. The treatment disposal component of their rate has gone up fifty-eight percent. None of those costs were passed on to your customers. They were absorbed in your current rates and obviously has led to the deterioration in the, the cash position of the utility. Next chart, please. So what, what we proposed in the 2020 financial forecast was a five-year rate plan of seven point one percent per year. As a percentage, that sounds high, but you have very low rates to start with. So we're talking, you know, in the neighborhood of less than five dollars a month per year increases. And part of that is, we, we, we wouldn't like to see that as the normal plan. Part of this is the fact that we're playing a little bit of catch-up from fourteen years without raising rates. We've got to kind of right the ship before we can move on to a more normal inflationary type rate. And in the following fifteen years after we phased in those higher rates, we did get back to an annual rate increase that was more in the neighborhood of four percent. But what we were trying to do with the first five years, in addition to improving and rebuilding cash reserves, was we were trying to cover your short-term rehabilitation and capital. So that's that five-year plan that Chuck presented to you. And again, continue to maintain your debt covenants. Next, next chart, please. So what this demonstrates is based on the projected plan of seven point one percent per year for the first five years, followed by four percent, that the revenue should be sufficient to meet the cost as identified in your operating budgets and your capital plan. Now, again, this data was developed several years ago. So where we stand today is we went another couple of years of operations without an increase. We know that there's new funding opportunities out there for you. There's some grant funds that are available that we can apply. We're looking at other opportunities for grants. We're looking at the ability to, to borrow at low interest loans for your wastewater system, for example. Given all that, while we feel like we need to update those numbers to verify that five-year trajectory, we don't want to continue to wait. We don't, we think you're at a pretty critical point in terms of your enterprise fund financial picture, that it's time to move forward. So we're recommending you go ahead and adopt the first increase of seven point one percent for this upcoming year. And then allow us a little time to update the numbers. Look at what's happened in terms of growth, in terms of operating costs and your cash balances as of today and come back to you this summer with a definitive plan for the next four years subsequent to this upcoming fiscal year. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I don't, I just, I think it's critical that, you know, after fourteen years of no increases, we need to get the ball moving in the other direction. If we don't, you know, we're going to quickly run out of our cash balances that have allowed us to go this long. If you would go to the next chart. I just want to show you that this was back in 2020, our projected cash reserve. You can see that the, the top is the emergency reserve, the, in the tan and the blue is the operating reserve. The targets we mentioned, sixty days and the ninety days are represented by the dashed green and, and orange lines. So we weren't achieving our target in the near term. Our, our balances with the rate increases are projected to grow to meet that target. The next one is a little busier. It's your renewal and replacement fund. And what that is, is obviously that kind of, the spending for renewal replacements is lumpy. It's not necessarily the same every year, but it reoccurs. And so what we try to do is come up with a funding plan over time that will allow you to have the money you need for your R and R. And this chart shows the yellow area is balance. The deposits are represented by the blue area. And so some of those deposits in the near term were being made from your operating emergency reserve funds. And then just to put it in context, the, the red bar is the expenditures in each year of the plan. But to put it in context, the green dash line represents depreciation. And depreciation is a non-cash expense, so we don't count it in rate mix. But it is representative of the use of your assets and how you're consuming those assets over time based upon a life of, say, thirty years for plants and seventy years for lines. There's a certain depreciation rate that you accrue on your financial statements. And we'd like to see your R and R keep pace with that over time. So that's why we put that depreciation line in there. And it relates to your expenditure levels, which are the blue bars. And as you can see, we've been spending far less than depreciation in the past. And over time, we're moving up to encourage more R and R spending throughout the, the twenty-year horizon so that we're doing a better job of, of taking care of our existing assets. Next chart, please. So just wanted to show you a little bit about what was going on behind the scenes to make this work. As you can see, there is one other fund that you maintain and it's your rate stabilization fund. And that fund is a large part why you were able to accomplish what you've accomplished in the last couple of years in terms of going forward with some of the capital needs and doing the proper maintenance on the lime softening plan. But the plan was to use those funds in the near term to help give time for the rates to rise enough to be sufficient going forward. And you can see the use of that fund going away. And as well, the hundred and twenty-day target is the green dash line on this chart. And as you can see, we're trying to maintain that through our operating and, and renewal, renewal replacement and registration funds. Next chart, please. So this just demonstrates, and as I indicated, you don't have a lot of outstanding debt. So by funding your required renewal and replacements, which are not operating expenses, that is, is basically comes after the payment of debt. So that's why you have such strong coverage. So you, you definitely have strong coverage. You have had it historically and you will have it in the future if you adopt this rate. Next chart, please. So the impact, we, we calculated the bills at several usage levels based on residential bill. Low use at three thousand gallons. That's essentially indoor use, very limited use of the indoor use. Then we've got the six thousand gallon bill. That's representative of your system-wide average. That increases four dollars and fourteen cents per month is what's being recommended or seven point one percent. The higher use is at ten thousand gallons. That increase would be five dollars and ninety-two cents. Obviously that includes some discretionary use for water for irrigation purposes. And then we just, for general service, we showed a two-inch user at twenty thousand gallons. And again, this just demonstrates that the recommended rate increase is effectively impacting everybody about seven percent of the bills. So this is a comparison that's similar to what Chuck showed you, but a little broader. This has got the communities throughout the, the, the eastern part of Florida and not just Broward County. And so you can see there are a few that are, are lower. And I, I would tell you that being low on this list isn't necessarily a, a, a positive because it may be indicative that the systems, and, and I haven't examined each one of these individually, but oftentimes the utilities there at the lower portion are probably deferring critical maintenance that they need to do and putting off increases when they get that far below the average. You're at fifty-eight, fourteen. This is for six thousand gallons of water and wastewater service. If you adopt the recommended rate increase for next year, it would put you at sixty-two, twenty-eight. The other utilities in this average are just over eighty-three dollars a month for water and wastewater service for six thousand gallons. Now, the, the thing I want to show you on the next chart, it's really the same chart, but we layered in where Broward County is and also showing you that, I'm sorry. If you, if we did need to increase rates seven point one percent for each of the next five years, without any change of any other utility in this sort, you would just be approaching the average of today's rates for your period utilities in southeast Florida after five years of seven percent rate increases. Now, again, with the, with the ARPA funds and the grants that we're expecting to utilize, we want to revisit those seven point one percent for the next five years. But I think it's, it's advisable to go ahead and, and get started with at least the first seven percent increase. And that's where we're at on the rate, rate post.
So just going to wrap up a couple of slides, recommendations, the next steps we're bringing forward here tonight for this mission to consider. First step, recommend adopting, as Chris said, an increase of seven point one percent immediately. That's based on the city's lost almost two years of potential revenue who weren't able to do it in twenty twenty. You had additional revenue lost and water cutoffs and liquidities. We feel like the work that we completed and presented here tonight in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty magic plan revenue efficiency study, it justifies a rate increase in this amount. So we're not just pulling a number out of the air saying here's seven percent. It's based on something that we did even a couple of years ago. And then this initial rate increase is the startup, potentially would be a multi-year plan to increase rates to cover costs and try to mitigate impacts to the customers. So that's, that's step one. Next slide will show step two. Updated master plan and revenues, studies and all the recommendation for future rate increases. So as Henry said, we have some work to do to update population projections, for example. It's, this, we're seeing it all over Florida, especially here in southeast Florida. The population projections we did back in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, we can almost roll off the window. Nobody projected that we would have the mass influx of folks that are moving into South Florida right now. So we need to go back and look at that and what impact that's going to have to the demand on your system now. Good news is new residents means new customers, additional revenue. So it's not, it's all bad news there. It'll be good for just physical demand on the system. So financial data that we used in our predictions to be updated. As Henry mentioned a couple of times, we're going to consider and aggressively pursue wide-range funding and low-cost financing sources that are coming available through federal and state programs. There is money out there. You already utilized ten million dollars of ARPA money that cities received and applied directly to the utility. Problem is from a planning perspective, you can't count on that. But certainly we can be very aggressive in getting, getting as much of those funds as we can. And that will allow us perhaps to back off some of the future rates. That would certainly be a goal and that's something that we've worked with staff already to identify. And maybe one more way out there. You come back and report with the commission this summer with an update and a recommendation for what to do in the future. So I think that wraps up our presentation. So questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say it's around slide forty-three, the slide that shows the rates for various cities. If you could pull that up. So the, the question I have on this is water versus sewer. I, I see a lot of cities have, have different ways on how they get to that total amount. What type of a, a user is adversely affected if you raise the water higher or versus the sewer higher in order to get to that, to that, that total number?
So you, you got, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what I'm trying to get to is if we raise water really, really high, are we adversely affecting this type of population as opposed to that population in sewer?
We, we almost treat them like two separate systems. So wherever the, we look at the, the funds, with the funds of revenue that generated as well as the costs are for water versus the wastewater. So that's why you, and I'm kind of like you brought that, there's, we actually look at it both perspectives. So we don't want to just, we're not just arbitrarily going to increase the water rates versus the wastewater rates. We're going to actually align the revenue requirements to the cost of each of those two unique systems.
Is there, are businesses more adversely affected if you raise sewer rate higher than, and, and we're helping the residents out? Or, or is that, is there really no correlation?
We really don't go in a way like that. You really want to keep it aligned with, with your costs and your rates are for and revenue are for each system. So, so we don't do what we're applying my app. So we're not, we're not being unfair to one, one customer based on the rest of the base relationship based on. Do you have a Republican comment on this side?
Quinn Hawk, read fourteen thirty Southwest six way. In the presentation, you saw a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar delinquency number. What are we going to do to collect those funds? Because that's a big impact on, on what's going, what you, you know, may be planning to do. So I'd just like to know what city manager or anybody, you know, can say about getting that money in. Okay?
You know what else from the public?
It's almost, it's almost good morning.
Welcome to the commission.
William Lane, Levitt Tillford, A. Deerfield Beach. You know, I wish we had, would have had this presentation when all the people were here because maybe we wouldn't have had the discussion that we had about the election. And, you know, something that, this is really important because a lot of people don't understand that there will be wars and it may happen sooner than later because water is the most important thing in your life. And people have the, you know, I, I feel like I'm, I'm preaching to the choir. And people have the, you know, I, I feel like I'm preaching to the choir. But have these people sat here and realized how important water is? And they're lucky that we have a city that has thought about it. Because after this presentation, I think we're doing a pretty damn good job at working our water. So that being said, thank you for everything you guys do, and we appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Close it to the public. I will say that $750,000, stating we normally throw about $450,000, $500,000 on a regular situation. Because of COVID, it bumped it up to $750,000 range, this kind of season. That's the number that we brought on a regular basis. Am I incorrect on that?
No, you're absolutely correct, Mayor. And one thing I tried to mention and didn't consider that on the utility bill, it's not only the water, it's water, but the stormwater and garbage. So that $750,000 actually carries the balance of all three of those funds.
And as far as collecting, we know we burned out that to doing water shut-offs.
That is correct.
Yeah, so we've reinstated shut-offs now, so we can get these, these ones collected. And we have had a program to give people a break on that, that's, that's common to me. And Mr. Lane, you're right. It's a shame that people don't stick around and hear this sort of thing. They'll, they'll focus on the petty stuff. This is, this is the big stuff. And it's disappointing, but.
Especially the people.
That's okay. I appreciate it, though, but thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public. See, anyone else? Close it to the public, Commissioner Drosky.
I concur with you, Mayor, 100% that this is far more important than any of the other issues that we discussed on meeting tonight. It's kind of a shame it's, you know, midnight now and we're discussing it. There's, you know, a handful of people left in the, in the audience. As I said, nobody wants a rate increase, nobody wants to impose a rate increase. But the fact of the matter is, is we have not had an increase for 14 years. And we've been funding the operations from reserves, not reserves, general funds, make sure. It came across that way, but I don't think that was the intent, it's enterprise funds, okay? Those reserves, but nobody wants an increase. And I always think of our sister city, Fort Lauderdale, and just the problems that they are having. And they are constantly in the news. And for Fort Lauderdale to fix their woes, it's not millions of dollars, it's hundreds of millions of dollars it's going to cost them to fix and, and get their system up to speed. We just cannot afford to keep kicking this can down the road and putting the residents in jeopardy of that, that situation. You saw in the presentation that we're getting close to mission critical on some of our components. And we just can't do it. I mean, as distasteful as a 7% increase is, the alternative is far worse, far worse. So I'm okay with 7% now. Let's see when they come back within the summer, we can evaluate then. But I think the rubber hits the road tonight. And, oh, there's one more guy. Was it in this presentation too, with that 7% increase? It's like $4, I think. I don't remember the exact slide. It was the average. We have $4 a month for those, you know, still listening. So it's, it sounds like a lot, but $4 a month, you don't wait, not impact the family budget, that's.
You're sure. I agree that this is very difficult. Trying to keep an eye on all this situations that needs to be addressed. But a modest $4 a month, depending on ones, what's the key community, very, very huge. So to some of us, $4 is not a lot of money. To other people, when you add that up every month, it becomes an issue. But then we're left with, do we fight against this? And if our residents make it worse, do we act on some of those issues? That's me, that's, we could hide, broken down to say, well, it went from 58 to 62. But then you also, in that respect, we have to look at that as well. And we would not, so this is something that has to be had. Thank you. Vice Mayor, who that, can you wish upon us?
And I know everybody's stuck on that $4 per month, but that is also the average. You have a lot of tired couples here who are on a fixed income, and they're not going to be using 4,000 gallons a month of water. They're, they're probably going to see more, closer to $2 increase, because they use a lot less water. You know, I can understand if your family are poor, or you've got a pool in the backyard, yeah, then they're going to use a lot more water. But, you know, the single individual who's on a fixed income is not going to, it's just probably a dollar increase. If it's a couple, maybe it's going to be a $2 increase, depending upon the amount of water that they've used. But, you know, this commission has taken action when passed to correct some challenges that the city has faced. Because we, or maybe we've changed the position we are now. And I think like Commissioner Drosky said, it's better to pay now than pay later than for all of those. So I'm going to be totally best focused.
Mission for us?
The only suggestion I'm going to make is in the future, selling this to the public is part of the job, getting them to accept it. Instead of saying seven and a half percent, why not just say about four bucks a month if you're using X amount of gallons? And if it's less, you'll be paying less. I think it'll be more palatable generally if we put it in the best light possible. But seven and a half percent, wow, that's a big increase. Four bucks, it's not such a big increase. And after all, we want people to accept these things without, what's the city trying to do with us now? They're trying to keep our heads above water and keep your water flowing nicely. It's just a suggestion, and with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. We have, I'll just say this, gas prices go down 25 cents a gallon. They'll make up for whatever increase we're going to have. That's how minimal this is.
Yeah.
If, if, if you're on that fix of making up the $4 cents, it's killing you on the month, you've got bigger issues. If we don't fix this, you're going to have real serious issues with us as well. So I certainly support a few of the motion, wish your partners.
Second.
Second, Vice Mayor, who that, we'll call please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
Yes.
Okay, we are now in comments by administration and legal. No comments illegal, right? No comments this evening, Mayor, from the last committee? We are now at city commission business. Item number 19 is resolution to city commission, the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, directing the city manager and appropriate city officials to review all city contracts and vendors, ensure consistency with all federal sanctions against Russia, and confirm the city is not doing business with Russian companies, directing the divestment of investments from Russia with Russian-related institutions, companies, or entities and individuals, providing for implementation and an effective date.
Mr. Drosky.
Thank you, Mayor. As promised at the end of the last meeting, I asked staff to put together an ordinance that given the atrocities that are occurring to Ukraine by Russia, that we review our portfolio and any business that we are doing with Russia or Russia-related companies that we divest immediately. I think this is even more and more, given the news that has come out in the last couple of days, basically the slaughter of the Ukrainian people, that point-blank range of mass graves, that this is something, an activity that we certainly don't want to support. And I would hope that my colleagues agree, and I'll be moving in the interim.
Anyone from the public here comment on this side?
I'd like to.
Good morning. Daniel Shidenski, 34 Keswick Ave, Deerfield 33442. I'm in support of resolution 19. I'm a US Air Force veteran, and I think also I have a brother here, an Air Force veteran, Vice Mayor Budak. And I have another brother, Army vet Bernie Parnas. We're all Cold War warriors. We fought against the Soviet Union in the eighties, the eighties, and the sixties, and the fifties and sixties. So one of the main reasons why the Soviet Union was defeated was because they went bankrupt. They couldn't support escalating the military as well as other endeavors and supporting their people. So basically, we hit them in the pocketbook, and that's one reason why, a main reason why the Soviet Union was stopped in the Cold War, and we won the Cold War. So I think the only way to really stop Russia from their aggression right now is to hit them in the pocketbook, stop their ability to finance a war. So I think this resolution is very, very important, even if it's a small thing with our city. Any little thing helps, so I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm going to close it to the public. Permission to approve?
Second.
Motion for Commissioner Drosky, second by, Commissioner Press, excuse me, Parnas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Yeah, number 20 is a resolution to city commission, the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, changing the name and designation of a certain right-of-way on southwest Second Street, west of Martin Luther, excuse me, west of Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, to mature a boulevard to a dual designation in honor of Harold Morrison in recognition of his contributions to the community, providing for an effective date.
Anyone from the public here comment on this side? Not city, closing to the public. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second on something that's well-deserved for Harold. All in favors, if we have motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Item 21, resolution to city commission, the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, supporting the Broward commuter rail project, providing for execution and an effective date.
Anyone from the public here comment on this side?
I'm sorry. Okay, all right, I'm sorry. All right. Daniel Shidenski, 34 Keswick Ave, Deerfield 33442. I'm in support of this resolution. I went to a town hall meeting on Thursday, March 31st. I think Commissioner Ben Preston spoke a little bit, I'm sorry, Preston, I'm sorry, spoke a little bit about this commuter rail project. I'm in support of it. What Commissioner Preston had said was this could bring businesses to Deerfield Beach, increase revenue, the commuters that stopped would go to businesses, go to restaurants, and this would help Deerfield Beach, bring money to Deerfield Beach. So I'm in support of it.
Thank you.
Tom Schisler, 59, northeast 11, Deerfield Beach. Just wanted to mention that this project would likely increase the train traffic into the city, it sounds like. And some of our streets can't really handle any more delays nor occurring on the streets as a result of train traffic and bridge openings. And I would like to see somebody to address the traffic in Hillsborough, especially around, you got the speed tracks on my 60 in Hillsborough. Also, the traffic that's over on 95 is the result of tram rail tracks. And if there's any additional train traffic going through the city, it's going to drive east and west of the city.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? I'm going to close it to the public. I will say this, it's a really. Other issues, okay. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm reopening it to the public, all right.
Katie Farthog, 14, southeast Second Street. I'm not a big proponent of the location of this station, this, this commuter rail station. Are they going to give us additional information on this, or is this the only information that we have, is what is in the backup?
All it says is that we're supporting the bar commuter rail project. There's a lot of decisions to be made there.
And we will, we, are we having somebody stand on that board? Or is it all just private, so we just have to accept whatever they decide to do?
No.
We don't have any?
I can answer your questions if you want. Go right ahead.
Okay, that's all right, go ahead. That would, that, my question is, does it any say in what's going on with it? Or is it, is it just because it's running through our tracks, our backyard, literally my backyard, what say do we have in the location of the station?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Close it to the public. Mr. Santos, if you want to.
Thank you, Mayor. We, we, we did have some input into the exact preferred location for the station, but FDOT did pick a location somewhere between Hillsborough and Fort. This particular location makes the most sense. And there are some constraints to having other locations that have to do with certain requirements from the Federal Transit Authority and FDOT. So this, this location works out to be the best. In terms of what is actually developed on this private parcel, ultimately would, you know, need to come before the city commission in some form or fashion. But let's keep in mind that this is a private development. The actual platform would reside on FDC right-of-way.
Thank you. Permission?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed.
We are now at comments by mayor and city commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one comment. Over the past couple of weeks, I have visited the rural residents over in Broward. And one of the challenges that one of these residents face is, is the construction of these mega homes. These homes are within code. The builder and the contractors are, you know, everything by the book. And I love them, but when you sit in the backyard of a home and you want to enjoy your home, and as Mr. Shulford was here today, you're going to have three AC units going. You have a backup generator that's, I think it's a six-kilowatt backup generator, that is going to have to be primed once a week. So I would like for city staff to look at the zoning citywide when it comes to the construction of these mega homes. Right now, we have certain requirements regarding setbacks, and they're allowed to go up to 35 feet. And I was, I would like city staff to look into, maybe set that standard to 25 feet. And if the house is going to be a little bit larger up to 35 feet, we increase the setbacks, we increase the distance between the homes. Maybe look at some sound barriers. Because when we do any kind of project within the city, one of the things we always look at is how is it going to affect the residents that are already there? How is it going to adversely affect them? And is there anything that we can put in place to make it as, as equal as possible? And I think in the instance of these mega homes that are going to be popping up all over the city as our population grows, as the affluent people come in and realize that you're going to be just such a one place to live, they're going to be doing what's happening now in Broward. And even though this home is fully up to code, it still has an intimidating factor to both neighbors on either side. I've been assured that the landscaping is such that the water will not flow into the neighbors' yards, even though this home is set so many feet higher than the homes on either side. I have taken pictures of where I have concerns about that, and I've been assured that, you know, when the inspections go out, they're going to make sure that, you know, everything is up to snuff. And, you know, and everything is up. And, you know, and everything is up to code. Uh, and, and I'm sure it will be. Uh, but this, this resident has had to plant numerous trees, picking up a, a, a large portion of their yard just to try to get back some of the privacy that they've enjoyed over the years. Uh, and you kind of see how, you know, having a home like this next to you, you know, adversely affects your backyard and your enjoyment of your backyard. So, uh, again, what I'm asking is that city staff and Eric and his staff can take a look at, um, you know, our codes right now as it relates to these mega structures and, and maybe look at tweaking them a little bit. So then we'll find a winning way station where we're still encouraging these, you know, residents to, uh, to come to Deerfield Beach, but also making sure we're protecting our current residents. And I'd like the commission's support, uh, in that either.
Sorry. Anything else?
That's all I got, right? But I'd love to hear the commission's point of view or staff's point of view.
Well, I'd like to hear staff's point of view as well. Um, I don't think you're going to get it at twelve fifteen. But, um, I'm sure they'll be able to come back with us and give us some ideas on how that works. Because, um, I'm sure, um, they're going to have some product, some suggestions. One. Is that okay?
I can't wait.
I'm still awake, but I don't know what you think you're going to get out tonight, so.
No, that's fine.
Yes, I'm, I'm completely open.
That, that's.
Exploring it. That's.
That's what I want. It's for explorers.
No problem.
District closed down.
Okay, District Two. On the twenty eight, uh, there was a, uh, cleanup done by, uh, the Wallace West. It was a success, very nice, but, uh, the Wallace West members, uh, Dallas Catholic, president, was a good job. We appreciate you. We got volunteered on the high school. And some people came out, some young people came out, were, you know, a one that served hours and, uh,
Darrell, I apologize. Your approval will be voted on at the next meeting. Be a committee. I, I was hoping it would be tonight, but I see it's not. We are having a District Three meeting on the twenty fifth and Century Village at one o'clock. Um, I hope a number of people will come. The theme of that will be getting what we can from FDOT and avoiding the catastrophe on Tenshu. That's the theme of my, my district meeting. I want people to be aware that we're still fighting for the city. That the attitude, while it's going to happen anyway, isn't necessarily true or im- imminent. It's not like they're going to start work tomorrow. Bill and Todd have worked very, very hard, as have a few others, in getting what we can for the city in terms of FDOT. They haven't given up the fight either of us. So I'm hoping we get a big turnout to the commission. It'll be in the main clubhouse in the parking room. Uh, yes, I can't answer questions now. I will when this is over in a few minutes. Uh, other than that, other than that, um, I'm very happy with the way District Three is cleaned up in terms of code. Uh, that owners of buildings have become more cooperative. Is one thing that we, I'd like us to look into, David, if you could look into this. Is it possible to get a second recycle bin at the fire station? Because people tell me that it's constantly being filled.
I'll check into that.
Please, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Fourth?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one item tonight, pardon me, and that is this Saturday, April ninth, is the annual sip and troll out at Constitution Park. It is one of the premier events of the city, so I hope to see all my colleagues, the residents there. It is a ticketed event. Uh, there is a limit on the number of tickets, so please get there early. It's always sold out. And it is a fun night out underneath the stars and the lights in Constitution Park, especially with the, uh, waterfall and rainforests that have been installed. It's just a phenomenal setting. It's a great evening. So I encourage everyone to please come out and enjoy, uh, enjoy the night, uh, out in District Four. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Constitution Park, we are in needed bathrooms. We have, I, I know talking with the manager. We have some ideas on how we can assist, uh, that during the week, but, um, long term, we need to look at some weekends with our go bathrooms. And Constitution Park weekend, so we don't have facilities there. We have pickleball courts, playgrounds, basketball courts, we have arboretum. We have no restaurants. Um, and we have a, a canal that seems to rise lower. On the way in here, taking second and Elder Drive, and yet our old city facility has the green, uh, the green netting around it a few tasks years ago, put in place, so residents have to get, uh, just a chain link fence. And, and the old building, um, and city property, the green screen is now ripped up from the chain link fence. Uh, it's got a repeat on one section of it. We can replace that, I'm sure that, uh, so, uh, some of those are in the residence. Um, I want to thank the staff who put together our full appreciation party, those, uh, employees that came out. It's great to see a lot of the, uh, our employees' families and, uh, great time for us to spend, so I like that. Um, also, I, 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 I'm very serious about the suggestion that when we have the, uh, any zoning change, that we let myself know and even the district commissioners make sure, suggest they put together a, um, with whoever's developing it, so we can, uh, address some of these issues because we've seen in all districts where people come out, they say they don't care about it. It's better to take initiative than we put meetings together as opposed to keeping it up to them to do it. It never, never seems to work out. And I'll say this tonight, uh, besides, but we, we voted to spend thirty four thousand dollars so we can look people in the eye and say they wanted this. Say you've got an opportunity to express your opinion and, and have your, you know, have a say in this. Uh, but on the flip side of that, we also spent thirty four thousand dollars on people who don't want this. It's in a very loud, clear message, how it feel and put this to bed. You guys, uh, hopefully they'll put it to bed for a very long time. Give your ayes or ahs, we'll see. Uh, with that, looking for a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
With a motion second, I say aye.
Aye.